We're live.
I would like to call and order the June 22nd, 2020 Regular Board Meeting for the Tupi City Board of Education. We're going to start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Steve, we're ready for the vote.
Mrs. Donaway.
Here.
Mrs. Dahl is absent this evening. Mrs. Heatherly?
Here.
Mr. Patrick?
Here.
Mrs. Secor?
Here.
We have a court this evening not present, only one member absent.
Great. Committee reports, Dr. Calm, is that you or me? It's been so long since we've done things and you keep highlighting them. I feel like we've kind of gone back and forth on that. Okay. So, yeah, as always, we just want to thank Russ for his very detailed minutes for the Miami Valley CTC. And we appreciate all the effort that he makes in representing our district and the great job he does with his notes. So, that's that. So that takes us to the superintendent and assistant superintendent report.
All right. Before I start this evening, I do have a guest with us that will be on the agenda a little bit later. That's Brad Zusch, and I'm going to ask him to join us. Mr. Zusch, you want to come in? Actually, I've never done a step forward.
Okay.
Yeah, first time with our new setup, so.
That's good. So, that's, that would be good. And actually, maybe I'm going to have you come out just so that you want to be kind of, yeah, so that you can kind of almost face the person that way. Yeah, so then nobody can see you a little bit too. So, I'm just going to let you introduce yourself to our community and at the same time to our board, we'll be on the agenda a little bit, and that's for the technology coordinating decision.
I am happy to be here. I have 20 years of educational experience in technology. I love educational technology. I have several different certifications, trainings, anywhere from Aruba to Cisco, NEC phones, Google, Google Suite, Cyber Law and so forth. As you can imagine, 20 years, I have a lot of different experiences and stuff with it. One of the things also is I have a customer service approach. I feel the staff and students are our customers, and we have to keep them happy. I also feel establishing working relationships with staff, with administration, with teachers really helps to integrate technology into the instruction. I also will probably get to know you very well, right? We met the other day. Just because curriculum and technology really have a kind of close relationship all of a sudden, make sure we're working properly and meeting the needs of instruction where the district wants to go. Underneath this mask, I have a big smile because I'm excited to be here to be a member of Tupi CDC. So, and I look forward to starting.
Thank you so much for coming in. We appreciate that.
Appreciate that too.
Appreciate that. Thank you so much. Thank you for coming. We'll be in touch.
Okay.
All right. So, I want to talk a little bit about planning for our school year 2021. And Mr. Stevens, if you'll pull up, I've got just a couple of slides to kind of help talk through that this evening. Part of this is, once again, highlighting some items that were in a recent letter that was sent out to our community. Ready for the next slide. So, I broke that down into scenarios. And so, one of those, of course, is the most restrictive, which we found ourselves in as of March 13th. That was the stay at home and or an order similar to that. So, that could be one approach depending on what happens with their numbers. We noticed that members are climbing in different states across the nation right now. And in fact, we saw a little bit of growth here in Ohio, just as of today's count, I believe. Another scenario would be moving to an in-person learning. Oh, in this same scenario, I'm sorry. There would be in-person learning to not be allowed. In other words, because you're at stay home, it's going to be either conducted remote or distance.
Good. Before you continue, I just want to show, I'm getting a note that you're very muffled because of your mask.
Okay. All right. I will take that off momentarily. Thank you. So, broken down into several scenarios. And once again, there's many questions, and we're still looking and trying to work through answers. But one scenario would be the most restrictive, and that would be a stay at home or an order similar to that, which is what we recently worked through when we had our March 13 mandate to stay at home or stay in place, I believe, was the term that was used within that particular scenario. Even though we desire to have in-person learning, that simply does not permit that. And so, we conduct a remote or a distance learning model for that. For our second scenario, Mr. Stevens, thank you. This one would allow for social distancing, and there'd be some guidelines that would continue with that. We would probably explore a blended model if we were able to do that. And so, partial portion of that would be in-person, the other part would be with distance or remote. It would be difficult. All students would not be able to attend on the same day just because we would have this six-foot guideline. And it's just a matter of how many students that you can get in the classroom when you're having a six-foot distance. And we have begun really taking the dimensions of our classrooms in our various buildings. And it does, there is a wide variety there, but we see some may be as low as 10, others might get us up to 14. So, it does limit how many students you can have in on a given day, given the space that you're working with. And the next one would be if we were fortunate and, you know, a complete wave went through or we, as we continue to learn more about the virus, that, you know, we would not feel a need for health restrictions, and we'd be able to return to a more traditional school setting. And what I'd like to say is, I think we all, our hearts desire that very much. You know, if we could just be back to the way it used to be, is what, you know, in our minds. But I even put on here to return to a more traditional because I think regardless, there are going to be some changes. You know, that if we got it completely solved, now that's another, another case. But we'll just kind of have to take it a step at a time and see what we're able to do. Mr. Stevens, please. So, some additional considerations. Certainly, the busing with the social distancing is a real concern because if you end up truly with the six-foot social distance, some of the projections, and that's not been fully validated, that that would be the requirement, the projections are one student per seat unless you are from the same family. So, you can see that, you know, you may have a maximum number of 20 or 24 on bus. Food service with social distancing will be a challenge as well. And so, that could, that could look a lot of different ways. And so, there's many things that we're exploring, just in the realm of how food service would be conducted, prepared, disseminated, and where they would eat, whether that would be in a classroom or whether you would have a lunchroom with a certain capacity and maybe 50% or less in order to have the distancing. We do know that the eating and eateries, that there's a lot of control and specifications about what they are not able to do right now. And then recess, you know, that's a big part or an important part for our younger children and students to be able to have the movement. But with that, there's a lot of considerations. One is just even during play, are they able to continue to social distance? If we require to do that, and then even the wiping down of areas of equipment that have a lot of touch and multiple sets of hands on things. Face masks themselves, and you can tell that projections of voices, even with face covering, sometimes it's hard to get expressions. And I know as teachers, we read those expressions. Are they having difficulty understanding something, you know? Or do they seem excited about this concept that, you know, you're trying to teach? In addition, the sanitation and the cleaning, the aspect of the workforce that is needed to do that and keep that as an ongoing piece. But the other part is just the amount of cleaning and sanitizing equipment and solutions that might be required. Clinic protocol, that's an area that we receive some information on and that certain considerations about what that will look like if a student becomes ill, as well as, you know, has, is seen with a fever. A lot of different reasons for someone having a fever, and they're not all coronavirus. But that will be something that will be looked at a bit differently than what we usually have, although we've always taken care about contacting parents and making sure our students are safe. And so, I think in addition, that whole aspect about how can we improve upon our spring 1920, that we did have the mandated closure and that we, above our schools, and that we did our best, and that was a pretty quick turnaround moving to distance learning. But there's a lot that we keep looking at about how we can continue if we do need to do a component of distance learning, how we can do that better, how we can continue to engage with our students, and how can we keep it fresh? Because they've been doing this for a period of time so that they are still motivated and excited about their learning. So, just key takeaways, there's numerous questions, a lot of questions out there. And I know our families have that. We have that ourselves. We are waiting for answers and guidelines from the governor, from our Ohio Department of Health, even from our local health area, and certainly the Ohio Department of Education. There was a timeline that we were supposed to get a document on June 1st, and it seemed a draft. They've been taking the draft down now. So, we're just kind of in a wait mode. But I have heard that they thought possibly might have something last Thursday. Now, they're saying that if it wasn't Thursday, possibly in the next 10 days, which will take us into early July, which, which does make some sense about, at least if we can get it to early July, we will really be off, feet on the ground and working to build what that's going to look like. We are anxious to get, get those guidelines or find out how much local decision-making power we do have. And I will say that we want, we want to keep our parents informed, we want to keep our board informed, we want to keep our parents informed on what information we do have, the plans that we are putting in place. They're just formulating is the difficulty, and that we have to have, look at several, several ways to formulate those. We have spoken yet even this afternoon, and we had a bit of a discussion about that earlier, about something about questions and answers and posting that on our website. So, I know that Mr. Beerhoff, myself, Mrs. Robbins, who's fantastic with the communications, we will work diligently and try to get something out and give that's a Q and A piece to put on our district website. And it will probably be a piece that need to continue to grow, that we will begin with some beginning questions and answers and facts, and then as we get more information, we'll continue to try to keep that updated. I'd say I have any questions, but I know there's many questions, but anything else that I could add at this time?
Question. Where are you getting your scenarios and ideas from? Are you just thinking about it in-house, or are you looking at other districts and reading what?
So, a number of areas of getting those. There's even, you know, a number in what I call professional articles because across the nation. And so, certainly, I think we get pretty, you know, burst in checking, and there's a lot of information flow to superintendents about different kinds of webinars and Zoom meetings or Google meets. I do meet across the state on a weekly basis with superintendents. That's through the VASA Organization National Leadership. Also, I've been catching in, I've sent in on a couple of national, like the OSBA, it'd be the National School Board Association. They have some groupings. I sent in on a couple of those. But we're constantly, and so it's interesting, we have, may have as many as, you know, 50 to 78 to 80 superintendents in our state that comes together. But then sometimes in the national, there's more than that, of course, and you see different perspectives from across the nation. But everyone right now are, they are thinking about what's going to work for the district. They're also thinking about what, what is the level of the virus and what do we know about it? And then also thinking about how does that work for younger children versus older children? And then these many things that we talk about, whether it's recess, you know, it is just so many components to everything. You know, one of the aspects about recess is that may maybe become more of a nature walk because if they can't be on the equipment, we may have to think of other ways to get some movement to be outside that not really have hands on things. So, a lot of ideas. And I will say that the document that the Ohio Department of Education put out earlier had a lot of information. And I am pleased that I was able to access that download before, and they hopefully will put it back in place soon. I think that they just want one that has been aligned with both the governor, our health department, meaning state health department, as well as their thoughts, so.
We also meet legally with the Miami County Superintendents and Miami County Public Health.
I've gotten several letters from the community, and I've been trying to kind of look around as well on the internet to see what the climate is everywhere. Sure. And it is, you know, I've learned a lot, educating myself, just thinking outside of the box. Sure. First thing I just want to say to the people that are writing in is that especially the parents of younger children definitely want to get their kids back to a full-time environment. However, I just want to, the letters I'm reading, I don't get the sense that they're appreciating the mandates that are coming from above school districts, that this isn't something that we can just sort of go out on our own. We do have leeway, but I just want to emphasize that, and this is coming out loud and clear in other districts that I'm researching in Ohio. Number one, we have state mandates. And number two, then we have county mandates because our COVID situation in Miami County may not be the same as in Coyote County. So, there's a lot, it's not just so cut and dry. A couple of the things that I thought was interesting and thinking about, I mean, you know, I'm not tasked with having to create this. Thank goodness. But if I, if I was, you know, it's, it's just so layered. But I liked one comment about the different scenarios. I didn't think about this. The intermittent online learning and having it in place, even if we would go back to a class setting. Because the value of that is if, if the teacher has to be quarantined, if a student has to be quarantined, if a building has to be quarantined, it can still continue. You have that fallback already in place and cohesive, you can just stream into that if necessary. The other thing I was thinking about that I learned in some of the stuff I was looking at is the utilization of space outside of the classroom, such as turning in like utilizing libraries, utilizing cafeterias and gymnasiums, and even utilizing outdoor space, which I thought was very interesting. Because in my college days, that's what we progressively did. We thought we were so cool. Our professor conducting classes out on the lawn or the green or whatever. And since we're in that great weather first quarter, I mean, it is something, you know, as you can just think outside of the box. So, I know you're tasked with a huge. But again, I just want to emphasize because of the letters I'm getting, a lot of this is not free rein for the district to decide.
You're absolutely right. And it's a lot to balance, and that's the piece that makes this, in a sense, hold in place because you can make some plans, but when you get down to the detail of it, the requirements are the piece that we need to be working around it and weaving in.
And having backup plans.
Yes, yes. And I fully agree with the potential of the, the distance learning component of even making sure that we have a professional development and help our teachers along with that. Because if there would, in sometime during the school year 2021, be another true strong spike, then we would probably very quickly, probably within three days, once again, we'll find ourselves back with a mandated stay in place, should that occur. And it would be to our benefit and to our students' benefit if that was more of a comfort zone than something that they have been working with.
Is it going to be the expectation that the Miami County Health District is going to have to approve any plan we put in place?
I believe it will. And things such as our athletics, as we move toward that and have our different phases. And now with our marching band, that we've got that, have been able to get that approved. That ultimately, that is something that I know as a county superintendent is that we do have an interaction on a weekly basis, but that we all are submitting. Even though like with kindergarten screening, that's a piece that we will submit, how that will be conducted to keep them informed and have also received their feedback about those additional things that are safety measures they feel we should be putting in place. And things that seem pretty good.
Well, does the thing go to the bottom?
As far as discussed for the moment.
I just think we're all anxious to get some comments.
Yes.
Yes. Yes, we are. The next item on the agenda is just about our second semester bullying report. And we did not have any bullying incidents that were reported for our elementaries, our intermediate, or our middle school. We did have three at the high school level, and all three of those did occur prior to March 13. And there was an indication that there was no further incidents in each of those. And that maybe, hopefully given some time and space, that with the closure, that, that may have helped that situation or hopefully with some conferencing and working through the situation, that that really was the true result, that they were able to get that diminished and that we did not have repeat.
Can I ask a question? What, can you kind of define what, what constitutes a bullying and arrest incident? Like, how does, you know?
Right. How, and what is determined as that?
Right. Is it a, so I think there's a little confusion on that.
Yes. And I would say probably my, my best response would be, because we do outline and really look at what, what is the distinction between those. But I'll begin, and Mr. Beerhoff, anything that you want to add to that? We look at bullying as, for the most part, a pattern behavior, that it does happen. It's intentional and it happens more than one time, that it's not an isolated incident. If it is reported to us, we absolutely check that out. And then we also communicate how that was perceived or felt or came across. And that we look to see then if that does become a pattern, does that repeat, does that occur again? So, that, that would be probably one of the large components of that. Of bullying is usually not a single isolated case. It's something that does. And what we even can see as far as pattern behavior, that it might come and it might even escalate. It might begin with kind of small taunting that might get, you know, a little bit more aggressive or a little bit more hurtful and how that occurs in front of peers, a larger audience. And there's different ways that that escalates. Anything that you would want to add on that?
No, I think that pretty much covers it. When you look at the definition of it, yeah, it's multiple instances. It's a pattern of behavior. And as you said, Dr. Calm, that usually starts small and then escalates from there. And so, that's why it's important for our building principals to be following up on even the smallest events and making sure that there aren't recurring events happening.
Does bullying, oh, I'm sorry.
So, Anne and I get into a fight in the lunchroom, and she pulls my hair, and I punch her back, and then I throw my food on her. Does that make it onto this report?
One time.
It's a good question. I think that ultimately, if, if it would be reported to us as a bullying incident, then we would.
Well, of course. I mean, you know, I'm going to go into the principal's office and say, she just threw mashed potatoes on me, pulled my hair, scratched my eyes out. How does that work?
And so, one of the questions with that, I'll call it investigation or the question about it would be, you know, what is the basis of this? What brought this on? And then there would be that dialogue about, well, you know, earlier this morning or last week, and then, you know, over the weekend, and then this morning when I came into school. And then here I am at lunch. So, you could begin to see if there's like even multiple times, you know, on the bus, you know? And so, that would be part of the dialogue. You would inquire about what, what brought it to this point.
So, if that, in this, in my particular example, then that would not, that scenario would not make it onto this report, correct?
I, it could, depending on what had brought it to that point, like for example.
Does it require official paperwork in order to make it onto this report? Is there official paperwork that needs to be filled out with the building principal?
There's paperwork that they.
Okay. So, you're saying incidents, regardless of even that scenario, would be investigated and some resolution would be put in place, and that would be handled. As far as this report, though, you're saying has to be chronic or repetitive, happening more than once? Is that what you're saying? Because there's a definition of what bullying is to put it on this report. That's where I understood it. It's not that you wouldn't investigate complaints or concerns, and they would be investigated, but as far as what goes on the state mandated bullying report is based on the definition of bullying that the state has put out for all districts.
Is that correct? The, the one piece that I would say is slightly different than that is that if a student reports that they feel that they are being bullied, then we treat it as a bullying report. So, if someone is saying that on the bus, I'm riding to such and such or every, you know, and that they feel that it is a bullying, that they interpret it as a bullying situation and report it as such, we, we did, we would enter it as a bullying report, and we would indicate what steps have been taken and whether that was, how, how it was concluded, what kind of resolution.
Thank you. My, my question is bullying, that we're discussing now, I believe, is student to student. What, what are the parameters from teacher to student or student, not even teacher, an adult employee to a student or a student to an adult employee?
So, there are, there's a discussion in our board policy about that under bullying, about that. So, predominantly, it's student to student. Yes. But, but it does indicate that bullying can occur outside of student to student, and we know that adults to student.
And student. And would that go on this report?
Yes, it would or could as a bullying report, something that would involve adult to student with, you know, interaction, I think that would probably make itself into another report, depending on the level of it. All right. And then the, the third item this evening is just about our administrative staff. So, our administrative staff for the upcoming 2021 school year, we're glad to say that Mr. Gingrich will be back at Nuncorpic Elementary, Mrs. Smith will be there at Broadway Elementary, Mr. Vagadis is going to be serving LT ball, and Mr. Suthers will be at the middle school. And our high school will have Ms. Cristofano as well as Mr. Zink, and that will be our principals. Our athletic director will be Craig Kramer, and Mr. Spister will be our Director of Business Operations. Mr. Beerhoff continues to be our Assistant Superintendent, and Mr. Stevens, our treasurer. So, they will be in place for the upcoming 2021 school year, and they work well as a team. And I know they're very committed to working through the challenges and the problem solving that will be involved to, to make our upcoming school year a positive one for our students. All right. Anything else before we move on? Thank you.
Thank you. Citizen comments. We have two citizen comments tonight. So, I will start with, I believe, Kathy Bone. Good evening. I hope to hear from Greta this evening on what the schools are doing to move forward for the next school year. I have spoken to a few teachers in other districts, and they have been told to prepare for three different scenarios. One with at-school learning, one with mixed online and at-school, and one total online. They have been told to put their entire curriculum online just in case numbers spike, and we end up in some. and we end up in some sort of school shutdown again. There are suggestions of kids coming on alternate days to school with a decrease in student numbers in classroom settings each day, which also led them to the decision of putting their curriculum online. On the day some of the students weren't at the school, they could have class online. I have read the rough guidelines put down by the state so far and they are not set in stone, but merely guidelines. I would hope to see the school ready for whatever is thrown at them, whether I agree or disagree with the state. In a previous letter to the school, I mentioned all the what ifs and hope the school is looking at some of those to ready the students for a full return in the fall. I want to see the kids back in classrooms and socializing because I believe they truly need that. My second item is the online checkbook, which seems to be lacking in information. The last entries I can find are dates of checks last November. That really doesn't show a lot of transparency if the checkbook is behind seven months. This has been discussed before and reasons thrown out to the community about why it is behind. But I believe it is time to catch it up and keep it updated. The third item is TPA. With all the shutdowns, I realize TPA may not be able to do its fundraising for the year. But at their meeting before the shutdown, it appeared all money raised this year was to go to pay down the interest on their loans. They did say they need to be invited to the school board meetings. And I raised that before at a previous school board meeting. So I was wondering, have any requests been made to have someone from TPA at each board meeting to update the school on whatever they are doing to complete the stadium? If no request has been made to them, I would like to see the school board put that request out to TPA as soon as possible. Thank you, Kathy Bone. Okay. So the second email is from, I hope I'm pronouncing this correctly, Pam Shance. Dear Tip City School Board, I write to you today as you plan to discuss the upcoming 2020, 2021 school year. I have three kids in Tip City Schools in three different buildings. As a healthcare worker, I've been following the COVID-19 pandemic closely since day one. Before I go any further, I would just like to reiterate Governor Mike DeWine from his press conference on Tuesday, June 16th. He stated that recommendations would be released in the next 10 days. He also noted that local elected school board members will still have the final say based on their district's needs. Please vote in accordance with our district's needs. I'm asking you to please vote against moving the start of the school year. Primarily, there's no need to move this. The number of alterations that may be needed should be minimal. In addition, the school calendar has been published and released for over a year. Parents and guardians plan their time off, vacations, and more around these dates. Summer childcare is already, already scheduled to end before school starts. They will not be adding more dates, leaving families in our community once again without childcare as a result of COVID-19. Many parents have already used any available time off to be home or laid off during these past several weeks. There is no need to create a further burden. I'm asking that you please allow two students and staff to return without restrictions. This includes bus rides, lunch, and classroom settings. I have no problems with anyone that wants to wear a mask and would encourage those who want to do so. I have been in the older buildings and mandating masks would be miserable during the hot months. They will also create greater distractions than they will benefits. They also aren't practical or feasible for the bus rides either. The buses and buildings also aren't designed to allow for social distancing. There are over 200 viruses that can affect humans. We do not put restrictions such as social distancing or face masks into place for any of those viruses. The number one defense has been and will continue to be proper hand hygiene. My request today also includes that we do not partake in a blended school year. The last quarter of the 2019-2020 school year did not go well. In my household alone, incomplete assignments were being handed in. A review of submitted documents weren't always available. Vital classroom information wasn't available to parents. There was also a lack of continuity between what each teacher and class was doing and how work was to be completed. We also need to do a better job providing for our special needs kids. Their health isn't only benefited by the schedule that a normal school year offers, their health demands it. They also thrive under routine and structure and a social environment. This is how these children encounter different life scenarios and how they grow. It's not possible to replicate this added level of education in a homeschool or blended environment. They also need the face-to-face time with their therapist. These children will also need a setting that is mask-free as many of them have communication needs that require a visual of an instructor's face. Even our children without special needs require these basic scenarios. In conclusion, we need to remember that Governor DeWine has permitted us, the district, to have the final say in how our school year proceeds. We owe it to our children to give them a scenario that allows them the fullest potential to grow and learn. Our school doors need to be open. Our kids need to be in class. Our kids need social scenarios and growth. Our kids need their teachers. Our kids need Tip City Schools. And dare I say, Tip City Schools needs them too. Please open our doors on time as currently scheduled. Please do not place restrictions on our staff and children. Thank you for your time. Thank you for the work you are doing to give our kids a great future. Thank you for doing what's best for them, for us, and the upcoming years. Sincerely, Pam Shance. Thank you to, to both of our citizen comments. Okay, well, that takes us to president comments. In light of what Anne touched on earlier.
I think we're skipping TCEA comments.
No, she's- Sorry about that. I would break the present. Mrs. Younger. I need a break to take a drink of water anyway, so I'll thank you for saving me. Okay, so Mrs. Younger is here tonight to do the TCEA comments.
Okay, today, June 22nd, the Tip City Education Association members voted to either approve or deny the memo of understanding on the progressive pay model for the 2020 fall coach and band supplemental salary. 100% of the members that it was in attendance approved the MOU, 0% denied. So it is approved. I want to thank my executive officers and my labor relation consultant for providing great feedback to it, to us during the process. And I want to thank the district administration for working in cooperation with us to develop that language. And last, I want to thank my TCEA members for exercising their right to vote. We had a strong presence today. And Mr. Stevens should be providing you with a copy of that memo of understanding for this evening. Okay?
Thank you so much.
You're welcome, thank you.
Now president's comments, would you like to jump into my bars and my-
Sure.
You want me to help you out? Yeah, sure. Okay, so president comments. I would just like to kind of add on to what Anne said during the superintendent comments. And we have received many emails from parents regarding the letter that went out on Friday from Dr. Kumpf, the superintendent's letter. And I just, I reached out earlier today to Dr. Kumpf and Mr. Verhoff just asking if we could, on our district webpage, the homepage, do some type of Q and A. I noticed that other districts have been doing it since March 13th. And right now, we're all just getting overwhelmed with information. And each building has their own Facebook page and the principals are, some principals are sending out, you know, information, still some aren't. It's just kind of confusing right now. So I really like the idea of giving everything in one location. And also, I feel it's important that we update that as we, that it's very fluid, as we get information. If we keep people in the loop and we're getting that information all the time, it's gonna, we're gonna have less anxiety. And we, we by no means are discouraging people from emailing us. Please feel free to email us. Just make sure you check the district website because hopefully we can answer a lot of your questions on the front end. And I think our goal is to have that on the website, maybe Wednesday or Thursday, kind of a timeframe.
Yes.
Yeah, so that's it for president comments. Approval minutes, Dave?
We're doing something a little new this time with the minutes. So I did a webinar with board docs the other day and they told me about the feature.
It's awesome.
Well, it wasn't unlocked for us. So when they said, do this, I said, well, I can't. They said, what do you mean? And I said, it's not there. A few minutes later, it was there. But um, I believe that us voting on this will release the board minutes automatically. Once we put down a positive vote. If not, I'll just go out and release them as well. But we are doing them one at a time this way. So I-
Is this gonna be easier on you once, now that we're-
Oh, this was, this was way easier.
Yeah, because it was, you were spending way too much time on this.
No, no, that's not, it's just-
Before.
Yeah, this is just putting in drafts and printing out drafts and attaching them. This is just links to it, there you go. You can print it if you want.
Great.
Sorry, don't mean to talk with masks over. So I am looking to get an approval of the May 18th, 2020 regular meeting minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the May 18th regular meeting minutes.
I'll second.
Do we have any comments on those minutes? Okay.
No.
Ready for a vote?
Ready for a vote.
Heatherly?
Yes.
Dunaway?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Zakor?
Yes.
Motion carries.
I'm looking to get a motion for the May 27th, 2020 special meeting minutes.
I'll make the motion, second. Motion second, Dunaway and Zakor. Any comments? Ready for vote?
Dunaway?
Yes.
Zakor?
Yes.
Patrick, I'm sorry. Heatherly?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion carries.
And then finally, looking to get a motion to approve the June 16th, 2020 work session meeting minutes.
I'll make the motion. Second. Motion second by Dunaway and Zakor. Any comments? Ready for voting?
Dunaway?
Yes.
Zakor?
Yes.
Heatherly?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Wonderful.
Takes us to treasurer's report.
Right. Looking for a motion to approve the monthly financial report for May 2020.
I'll make a motion to approve the financial report, May 2020.
Can I get a second? Second. Motion in second, Heatherly, Zakor. Any comments or, from the board members or any comments from you, Dave?
Uh, it's just, we did see some cutbacks in purchase services for that month because of not being in the building. So our electric bills, water bills, things of that nature were smaller. However, you know, our salary expenses were still consistent. So we are still performing better than where we expected in our budget. If you look at the BVA report, which is your fifth thing, hopefully this will carry us through as we go into the next fiscal years, so. Uh, and also on our self-insurance fund, I'm not sure if you saw that we did have a very good month last month and we had a nice positive increase. I've also been made aware that we should be receiving a refund as well for one of our cases that exceeded our stock loss amount of $100,000. So we had to pay all of the claims upfront. Now we'll be getting a refund. I think that's the amount of about $150,000, so. I believe, my personal opinion is that the switch that we made to go to the self-insurance has worked for us so far. I'd like to, I'm, we will be meeting with the insurance carrier to discuss rates for next year. But I believe that with what we have, I'll knock on every piece of wood.
I know, I didn't even talk about it because you don't want to jinx it, you know?
I'm not sure what they'll offer for us, but I do believe that if it was anything crazy high, which I don't expect because of how well we've done this year, we could use the balance that we have to offset any increases, which is what the whole goal was in the first place.
Yeah, I remember when we met with them about a year ago, they, we asked them about that because the reason why this all came up is because we got that huge increase from our present, you know, current.
We got a 26% increase on the board for us.
Yeah, and they pretty much said they don't really typically do that. Is it company? I mean, I can't remember that coming up.
Uh, they mentioned that they don't, they haven't seen any of their clients after the first year say this was bad and we don't want to stay with you.
That made me feel kind of, you know, calm, that we weren't gonna get the big, oh, hey, you're, you're way more than sending gifts.
And I will add that tip was the Guinea pig. We left the EPC last year, I believe we were the only ones that left and I have received, I would say a handful of phone calls from treasurers asking how it went for us. And that's been very important, coming and letting them know that it has worked well for us, but if there is risk involved with any decision like that, you have to weigh your options carefully.
I'm not sure if it was on this report or it was one of these financial reports. Do you have any indication when the Medicaid reimbursement? You were referencing the Medicaid reimbursement in 2017. I know they're a few years behind.
Yeah, they're a couple of years behind. We did just, I did get notification that we received another one. I can't recall if it was this month or last month. But they do continue to trickle in slowly. Yeah.
Thank you, Dave.
Thank you.
Any other questions, concerns, comments?
No, I think we're ready for a vote.
Heatherly?
Yes.
Zakor?
Yes.
Dun, Dunaway?
Yes.
Patrick?
I'm staying.
Motion carries.
Right. Next, I'd like to get a motion for approval of, approval of the ORC 5705.41 purchase order certification then and now for fiscal year 20, May 2020.
I'll make a motion. Then and now.
Have a second?
Can I get a second? Motion, no second. Second. Okay, we have a second, so we'll go with Heatherly and Zakor. Any comments?
Just one item.
When it's suburban school, that's the reason why I didn't second the motion. I've been reaching out to you, I don't know who this is, sorry.
This is the vendor that's transporting the child that we recently come in from northeast.
Thank you. I apologize, that's why I didn't say it, because I didn't have time earlier to reenact what that was. Okay, thank you. Okay. Any other further discussion?
Well, I just want to follow up on that because the point you just made about getting a second, just for Robert's rules, it's my understanding, seconding, making a motion seconding, it's not that you're supporting the item as much as you're covering it up for a dis- discussion.
Correct, I just thought it would be unusual for someone not to second it, so I was kind of hoping somebody would jump in and-
That's a public misunderstanding, I know.
Yeah, oh, okay, well, yeah, I got it.
Seconding or, or first for second does not mean you agree with it.
Exactly, you're just, yeah, the public, some people probably feel like, oh, you're behind that because you, it's, it's not, it's not what it's about.
You're just putting it on the floor, basically, yeah, understood. Well, thank you for giving the second because I, I was not going to, because I didn't know what it was for, so I appreciate that. I think we're ready for a vote with all of that commentary, Dave. We're ready for a vote.
Okay. Heatherly?
Yes.
Zakor?
Yes.
Dunaway?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Now we're getting into some things that are a little, I think you don't see this very often. I'd like to get a motion for approval to convert the $65,000 advance from the general fund of the food service fund that was originally approved by the board on G24, 2019, Resolution 2019.06.13, convert that to a transfer.
I'll make the motion. I'll make the motion. I'll second. Motion in second, Dunaway and Heatherly, is there any discussion?
I'll just note that-
Yeah, we don't have-
We've transferred money to the food service, advanced money to food service every year. We felt that this year was gonna be our year. Mr. Pfister was really excited.
I know.
And turns out, I think we've lost a hundred and twenty-five, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars of potential food service revenue. So he was very disappointed. So unfortunately, the food service fund will not be able to pay that advance back this time, which means we need to convert that to a transfer. And, uh, you know, I don't wanna say good news is, but I'm sure there are many, many, many districts out in, in the, in Ohio, if not the nation, that are having to supplement the food service programs with their general fund money at this time. So maybe better luck next year.
Well, who knows, like next year's-
Who knows?
We'll just stick with what we have right now and go with it. Any further discussion? If not, we're ready for a vote, Dave.
Dunaway?
Yes.
Heatherly?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Zakor?
Yes. Motion carries.
All right. I am looking for a-
I'll make a motion for transfers and advances.
As listed.
Motion by Heatherly, can I get a second? Okay, I'll second. Motion by Heatherly, second by Dunaway. Is there any discussion or comments from you, Dave?
I believe that the, the notes on there speak for themselves. We have to do some advances to eliminate negative fund balances in our federal grant funds. This is just normal procedure. Once we get the money back in July, we'll, we'll do a transfer back in. This is just something that's recommended by the auditors. And then we have some other funds, the food service fund again. So I'm looking, I'm recommending an additional 20,000 in the food service fund to just cover the remaining expenditures that are expected for this month. And that's all salary benefits. And unfortunately, while school is out, we still have salary benefits being paid over the summer for July and August, so without revenue coming in. So that takes me to the next item, which is a $65,000 advance. Or next year, I'll make that advance next year and put 65,000 in food service. Hopefully, we can pay it back. Any other questions on these?
Dave, why is there a negative fund balance of 4,500 for the football team account?
So when the football team originally submitted their budget, we had put in, in a line item for pay-to-play transfer being put into the accounts. And when Mr. Kramer came on, we had discussed the transfers of those pay-to-play account items. And I indicated that Jay-Z and I, before he left, had discussed looking at what was truly needed for those funds. And so Mr. Kramer wanted to hold off for the final transfers into that account until year ends. And so that's what this is. We waited for final year end to do the transfer in. So we're just removing that negative fund balance. Now, that, that fund is part of a much larger fund, the 300 fund, so.
Are you good here? Yes. Okay, great. I think we're ready for a vote, Dave. Don't ask somebody else what to, I think we're good?
Heatherly?
Yes.
Dunaway?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Zakor?
Yes. Motion carries, Dave.
For my next item, looking for a motion to approve the fiscal year 2020 final appropriations list.
I'll make the motion. I'll second. Motion in second, Dunaway and Zakor. Discussion or comments from you, Dave or board members?
The only thing, I just, just to note that the transfers and advances that we just discussed, I have included them in this report here for the appropriations. So, and the only other thing was, we received a local grant for the tiny house in our 09, $3,500.
Yeah, I think we're ready for a vote, if you are.
Sounds great. Dunaway?
Yes.
Zakor?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Sorry. Heatherly?
Yes.
We're not used to being back in this room, so we're all off, we're alphabetically off just a little bit. Final item.
Final item for treasurer. Looking for a motion to, approval to adopt 25% of the fiscal year 2020 final appropriations as temporary appropriations for fiscal year 2021.
I'll make a motion. Motion by Heatherly, can I get a second? Second, Dunaway, so Heather, motion by, motion Heatherly, second by Dunaway. Any comments?
This is just something that we have to do procedurally every year. The county auditor requires we do a permanent appropriation adoption before September 30th, 2021. And so we'll take this time to develop the budget from the staff members, or from the administrators and supervisors and also the coaches and the teacher advisors for, for the class activities. So we'll have, those will trickle in, we'll do various approvals over the next few months. But September 30th will be our permanent, this should be the entire budget for everything ending what come with May. Any questions?
I agree for a vote, Dave.
Heatherly?
Yes.
Dunaway?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Zakor?
Yes. Motion carries. Takes us to old business, does anybody have any old business? Okay. Well then, guess what? New business, so Dr. Kump.
New business, item A. Recommend approval to accept the following resignations as to the agenda.
I'll make the motion, can I get a second? I'll second. Motion in second. Dunaway and Heatherly. Any comment, any comments? Ready for vote?
Dunaway?
Yes.
Heatherly?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Zakor?
Yes. Motion carries.
Item B, recommend approval of a change in assignment for the 2021 school year due to reduction in force for financial reasons. Candace Jacinski, from 1.0 FTE high school teacher to 0.64222 FTE high school teacher.
I'll make the motion, second. Motion in second. Dunaway, Zakor. Any comments? Ready for voting?
Dunaway?
Yes.
Zakor?
Yes.
Heatherly?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item C, recommend approval to create a technology coordinator non-teaching position and no longer utilize the director of technology administrative position.
I'll make the motion, can I get a second?
Second.
Motion in second, Dunaway and Zakor. Any comments?
Yes, I have a comment. Under the minimum qualifications, I thought the initial posting I saw on this was a bachelor's degree preferred. Did that change with? Just curious. Because I was even surprised by that, that it was preferable rather than required.
Right, rather than required.
But then I see on here it's a requirement.
So the, the, the one that you were looking at is our newly developed piece, of course. I don't know if I actually brought the one that was the actual posting. Is that what, the two that you're?
It could be, but I, I, I thought it was when there was an overview of the job description and the requirements. So I was just curious why that changed.
I can check further, particularly-
That's okay. I just thought if you know, I can.
I do not. What I do know is that some individuals do work their way up, particularly in the area of technology. And they start, and then as they begin working up through them, they get the additional credentials, which are really not necessarily a degree, but a specialist in, for example, Google Suite or different platforms, even with the programming. And so that's why that may look different. But I can seek additional information.
No, it's not necessary.
Okay.
So when the applicants were interviewed for this position, were they given this draft?
They were given, they were not given this draft, they were giving the-
Preferred?
The one, then the posting. They would provide the posting.
The one that was on the consortium? The one-
The consortium posting, which is what we were working with at that time.
Okay, so my concern is, we advertised for a position, we recommended somebody for a position based on interviews. Is there something that is an attachment here that says that this is gonna be your new job description? Or were applicants informed that this is going to be different than what they were interviewing for?
I don't know personally inform them of that. I don't know if those that were directly doing the other part of the process did or not. What I do know is that this does align closely. But I understand if there are, it happens to be a difference that, that particularly with this bachelor's degree or higher that is here. What I, and, and that's the piece that you're looking at that's different?
I'm not concerned, it's not based on her question.
Okay.
It's based on, we posted a position, we solicited applicants for the position, we had them interviewed thinking it was gonna be a, be a position. Tonight, we met the candidate that you're recommending for hire. If this is the job description, this applicant for hire needs to know this is the job description that he's gonna be working under.
So that's this is-
I think I, go ahead, go.
So-
I can help you.
Okay, one, one thought, I mean, the, the job description is something that will, would go with his contract. So that he would know what those expectations are, you know, the qualifications, all those things. I do think that he's been through three, three sets of interviews that opportunity for question on that would have been made available and would have helped be clarified. But it's difficult if they don't know to ask the question. What might you miss?
I just wanna, I, I don't wanna have order.
I think we've gotten out of order on this.
Yeah, I don't want to read Joelle's mind or put words in her mouth, but I think what, what she's trying to say is, you know, this is the first time we've seen this document because we received the document that was on the consortium. So we wanna make sure that Mr. Bush, has he seen this document? Because obviously he saw the consortium one, because that's how he found us and interviewed, et cetera. So I guess the confusion is, where did this paper come from?
Well, this, this paper is from the Tell-
That's what I thought.
... job analysis. And, and so there was an effort because it is a new, before it was a director of technology. This is a coordinator of technology.
Has Brad seen this one? Has Mr. Bush seen this one?
A form of this, this actual, this document right here?
Isn't that your concern, Joelle, that he's, this is actual-
So if we approve this tonight, I would recommend that Mr. Bush, who are going to be asked to approve later-
Right, yes, correct.
That he received this new job description and signs off on it.
Right.
As everybody should sign off on their job description.
I agree. And it was actually a spot on this board signature on the second page.
Right.
Now, this is just, this is still a draft job description.
I understand, but it's for-
We're not, yeah, we're not approving this job description tonight. We're just approving the technology coordinator position.
To put it on the table of organization to replace the technology director. The technology coordinator position, if you don't know the, what's entailed in that.
We're hoping to use this.
I just wanna make sure to, like, that Mr. Bush sees his job description before he accepts, you know, accepts a employee here. That's kind of-
My, my point of confusion, that was a little bit on that minimum qualifications of a bachelor's degree. And when I looked at Mr. Bush's paperwork, I wasn't sure that was part of it, which will be coming up here. So maybe, Dave, I am, I am not clear what this piece is here that we're, what we're doing with this. This is to replace the technology director position on the table of organization and replace it with this job description. As a coordinator.
Right.
And that's what this vote will be about. So maybe later on, if this gets to the voting on Mr. Bush.
Just separate piece.
Ask those questions again.
Okay. Because previously, the position wasn't administrative. So we, it's no longer an administrative position, it's a coordinator position.
And I do see, it does say draft PDF. I have, I mean, if you look at the title there, it does say coordinator draft, which means it's not been, it's not at its finalization, like a Tell job analysis process.
Okay.
It is a bit confusing.
I guess I would just wanna make sure that whoever were recommending the position understands this is the job description that we're expecting them to work under as a coordinator, not a director. I'm sure that's part of the experience.
They absolutely understand that it is a coordinator, not a director. That, that I can confirm.
Okay, great. Well, it states that right at the title at the top, but he hasn't seen this one, because he saw a consortium paperwork. So he's gonna make sure. Okay.
But the consortium was posting a coordinator position, not a director.
Yes.
Yep.
I, I, I don't wanna get in the way here, because I was assuming to hire somebody. Seems like Brad's qualified, but I think that when I'm looking at this, I think the points, the points made by the rest of the members of the board are somewhat pertinent and well-taken in that we're recruiting a position, we need to understand what that position's essential job functions are gonna be and minimum requirements. And so-
I think we're all just trying to make sure that Brad knows what he signed up for, right? And, 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 well, you know what I mean? Because we don't know what, we don't know what he was gonna, we don't know what he was told, because none of us were-
I'm, I'm the one looking at it from procedural ponder here.
Yeah, I think we, we all kind of run some issues on that. Dr. Kump, what's your suggestion at this point?
So I, I believe the thought process was that this is, even though it's a draft, it's, it's near its final copy, but ultimately that the job descriptions would all come in together at one time, so that that was a complete piece and that that would be approved by the board.
Has Brad seen this? This is gonna be essentially, is this, this is Brad's job description, correct? Has Brad seen this? Or has he only seen the consortium piece?
That I don't know.
Okay.
I did not provide him with this.
Who would know?
Mr. Pfister or Mr. Stefani, possibly.
Where did this come from? I, it came from Mattel.
Yes.
And-
It came from Mattel, but it has-
I guess, when did we get it from Mattel? If we got it, go ahead, sorry.
It, it has that whole job analysis.
Oh, yes, it's going on for months.
Right. And it's, so it's been quite a process. So there's been multiple drafts. And so there has been input in it and it's been, you know, like dialogue back and forth as you're trying to get toward the finalization piece.
Sure.
So I, I believe the effort is for us, once again, that we're moving from a director position to a coordinator position. And we wanted to make sure that, that that is what, that's what's been posted, that is what we're approving him for at that level. And then there is also a salary scale schedule for coordinator instead of directorship, because one is classified and one is seen as administrative classified. And that this is not seen as an administration position.
Senator, I didn't mean to interrupt you. Do you want to follow back up on this whole conversation? I didn't mean to cut you off.
Is there currently a motion in second for approval?
Yeah, we motioned and seconded, and then we opened it up. We opened the floor for discussion. That's, I think we're all just trying to figure out what Brad was told, what was posted. And we wanna make sure that he knows what he's, what his job description is, what he was told more specifically. Go ahead.
I'm not overly concerned about that as much as I am ensuring that we don't approve something that then gets violated upon approval of Brad's hiring. So I would, I would move to amend this motion. To approve the, the new position. To approve the, the new position, technology coordinator with
Knowledge that Brad has the
It has nothing to do with Brad's correct job description. With an understanding that the attached job description draft is for illustrative purposes and authorizing the, the amendment of that as it relates to the educational requirement to state bachelor's degree or equivalent experience as approved by the board.
Well. Now that I'm looking at this written on the agenda, this is nothing more than a item to approve the change in title from a administrative position to a coordinator position. Is that what this motion is really about?
Yes.
Correct, with the new job description from Mattel, which, uh, because they've updated our
Well, it's a draft, and it's clearly stated anywhere as such, a draft.
Yes, yeah.
So it's, to me, it's not really about the technology coordinator description as much as it is about the motion that you're changing it from an admin position to a coordinator, is that?
That is correct. That is correct.
Okay.
I do appreciate, uh, Mr. Patry's suggestion on that qualification because it will give us greater latitude.
Will that come further down on the agenda rather than at this given time?
I essentially.
He thinks that.
So we discuss this, but Simon, do you want to add that part to the actual Brad's item? I blame him.
I, I guess.
Because a draft is subject to revision, I'm sorry, Simon.
Yes.
When, when I'm looking at creating a position, I need to understand what I'm creating. And so, I, I would I would presume that when I'm accepting that creation of a position, I understand what these central job functions are going to be, what the minimum qualifications are going to be. Um, having this motion before the board with a draft of an um, a, a not finalized draft of the job functions and qualifications to me can create some issues for us, and so that's why I moved to amend it to modify the, the, um the qualifications to the bachelor or equivalent degree. Because based on the resume, I think Brad's accomplishments are speak for themselves, but it's not clear to me whether he's got an undergraduate bachelor's degree. So, um I think that, um, I, I would start when we're creating a position, we need to understand what it is and what's required. I think that that needs to be defined now before we approve the creation of a position. And so I'm not comfortable approving creation of a position that does not have a final description of the essential job functions and qualifications. So that's kind of my issue, is my issue is not so much that Brad has interviewed the job description. Um, when we, it's, it's just, I don't know how you create a position without identifying what it's going to be and what it requires.
Right. So going back to the original thing, Simon made a motion to amend. So did anybody want to second that motion?
Could you say that again, please, Simon? What is the picture, what are you doing there?
Yeah.
I'm not sure we need to amend it, we need, we've got a motion.
But he said, but he made a motion, so I'm just asking, no, I mean, I'm just asking for a second because he did make the motion. So does anybody want to second Simon's, um, can you remember exactly what you said, Simon?
So I, I would move to essentially what I'm, and I'll, I'll restate it because I don't think I said it clearly the first time. I would move to amend this motion to include approval of the technology coordinator description as provided in the draft with the modification to the minimum qualifications. I'm sorry, I'm not getting I have to type this up and I'm not getting it. So.
I need to comment before we go into it because we may not need the modification. That's just, if it's a draft, couldn't we open it up to say we want to make this modification to the draft to include this educational? Well.
Well, I guess we could approve it and amend it later on. I mean, that would be a, a new motion to amend the newly created position. Uh, but I, I'm, I'm new, I, I'm not, I'm not comfortable I, I guess I, I don't want to say that, I, I don't know how I move forward on this motion if we don't have a definite description of the functions of the job and the qualifications.
Well, to your point, Simon, if we do amend it to add the bachelor thing, then we don't know if Mr. Bush has a bachelor Yeah, we don't know because, so if we add the bachelor part to the job description and he doesn't have a bachelor's degree, we have to reiterate everybody and start from scratch. Because it's
The certain of that.
Right, because the original, going to Anne's point, the original consortium piece said bachelor degree preferred.
So, and he's at or equivalent.
Or, yeah.
Yeah, my, my feeling is, is he's got a lot of education professional development that's in years of experience.
Right, right.
And so I think that we just need to approve it, but amend and, and I would say, forget that it's a draft and just say that this is our job function, these are what we're doing. Uh, and if we want to amend it later on, that's fine. And then I would then authorize then later on related to Brad to, you know, position. And then he can decide whether he wants to take it or not based on the functions of the job that are here.
But you have to address the minimum qualifications.
Yeah.
Which is, is my, is my motion to amend, yeah.
Right, how would you word that then? As a preferred or as a required for bachelor's?
I, I don't really, go ahead.
No, sorry. We're, I think we're all trying to accomplish the same thing, we're all trying to be helpful. Dr. Kump, if you look under the minimum qualifications, it says bachelor degree or higher from an accredited institution. So if we hire Brad, we are violating our own job descriptions.
What Mr.
Right, 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 so.
So he added on there or equivalent experience to the
That's not on the job description, though.
No, that's what he wants to amend.
Oh, yeah, yeah, totally, correct, yeah.
The, 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 the description of the technology coordinator.
Qualification.
Qualification. And to back up, this board, a previous board authorized Mattel to do, uh, update all the job descriptions. And you were, I think you were saying that that's almost done, but it's not completed. But given that we have this one position, we are receiving this recommended draft from Mattel to make this in, we're supposed to adopt it. And so we're adopting it with this recommendation to change the minimum qualifications to the language that Simon suggested. And that was advertised, correct, to the public?
And it sounds like it was correctly advertised, I think.
That was advertised as preferred.
I'm trying to figure out what Simon's amendment is, so Simon, if you look under, I'm just trying to if you look under minimum qualifications where it says bachelor degree or higher, are you trying to change? Is your amendment to change that so that we can put like in lieu of? Because right now it's just a draft, so we can still change it? Do you know what I'm saying? Because we've already offered him a position. And it's, you know, he's, to your point, he's got twenty years' experience.
We, is that again that's
Do you need a minute later? Right, we just want to, but it's the next item, it's the next item. So, do you see where I'm reading that from? Is that kind of what you're trying to? Under minimum qualifications? It says bachelor's degree or higher from an accredited institution. So we can tweak that into a draft.
I would suggest in the interest of time.
Sure.
That I type up my motion to amend, I will email it to Dave, Mr. Stevens, and read it. Um, and then, Mr. Stevens, you can copy it and paste it. And then we can present it before the board, and then that way we don't have too many discussions on it that are maybe not necessary, and then, um so I would, I would, I guess I, I will withdraw that motion and, and, and because it hasn't been seconded yet.
I think your motion is appropriate.
Why, I don't disagree.
But, you know, I'll second your motion because I think you're correct.
But I, I think, I, I can present it here, if you, if you I'll be able to multitask and draft detail enough language that I think will, will clarify this issue for everyone. And then that way Mr. Stevens doesn't have to try to take it down or become a court recorder and
Right, that's kind of you. So Dr. Kump, how does that? Because we can change it, this is just from Mattel, we hired Mattel, we're, we're in charge of this job description. Do you see where we're talking about, minimum qualifications?
I do.
Um, I like Simon's suggestion of, I mean, all we can add is like, yeah, we just need to add a comma in lieu of or, you know, something.
Well, I think
Whatever you come up with, Simon.
Yeah, I think it requires two things, one, moving to amend it, approval of the condition or the position to include the description as part of it, as part of that position.
Correct.
And as modified by changing the minimum qualifications.
Yeah, I agree.
Um, and then that will then prevent us from creating a position that then uh, puts us in a position where we're hiring somebody that may or may not satisfy what we just created.
Right, it would violate our job description.
Well.
Yeah.
Create a new potential.
Right, right.
So, but, because I have to draft this, let's just, I, what I suggest from our presence, that we move on. I'll draft the language and then we can come back to it right before we deal with that.
Oh, so you're into it during the meeting?
I'm doing
Oh, perfect, okay, awesome. So let's table, I, I didn't, I missed that part. So let's just table item C, I love that, let me work on that, that's great. Um, so it's already been motioned and seconded, discussed, um, we went through the amendment. So we're going to come back to that, you let us know when to raise, Simon. So, Dr. Kump, let's move to item D and give Simon some time to come up with that verbiage.
Well, we're gonna have to skip D and E.
Oh, yeah, correct, C and D.
Come back to it.
Okay, and E, okay, so we'll start on F.
That sounds good.
C, D, E, we'll, we'll come back to, thank you.
Um, and I just I want to give you that after he was the attachment.
Yeah, I looked at that.
Okay.
I didn't see the education.
I just have this other question while we're
Sure, yeah, go for it.
So the, the next piece is that, um, I have a part of education licensure. So we have teaching licensures, but they also do classified licensure. And I'm just I want to make sure whatever the language is that we do, because we're so, so used to, like, for example, our former director of technology had been previously a teacher. And so that would have been a certified, but this doesn't say it, this is classified. But, and OBD does both certify and classify, I just want to make sure it reads correctly for us.
So, and I was, I, I thought he, and I could have been, I may have misunderstood him when he was talking. So he may not have that qualification as well.
That's what
I don't believe he's a teacher.
I, I'm pretty sure he's not even, or even for classified.
Right. But I don't like to assume things, but I'm pretty sure when I read all this information that he's not, not a teacher. Um.
Okay.
I'm thinking that it might be helpful if Mr. Miravah just gave Mr. Pfister a call.
Yeah.
About what else, thank you, licensure.
Would that be okay? And then, what else do you need to know, Simon?
And the degree.
If he has a degree.
I believe it's an associate.
Yeah, what, what his college degree is, if any, and what his licensure is.
Dr. Kump, if you'd like me to go into AppleTrack, I would think I could probably pull some of that information.
Oh.
Like.
If you can do that, that'd be great.
The University of Ohio, but I think maybe we meant Ohio University.
Yeah.
If you ever wrote that up.
Do you have access to AppleTrack or do you need to go on the computer? Okay.
Okay, very good. All right, we will move on to F.
F.
Recommend approval of the salary script schedules for the 2021 school year for administrative classified and substitute staff.
Can I get a motion? I'll make a motion. In a second?
Second.
Motion in second by Heatherly and Zicor, any comments? I would like to congratulate the board on, you know, the work that we put into the, the paid holidays, the vacation days, the um, accumulating personal leave, and I'm glad that we got that cleaned up. And I think it's going to help the district and future boards, so uh, we appreciate the board's work alone and Helen, and the coordinating back and forth with Mr. Stevens as well, so appreciative of all that. Anybody else? We're ready for a vote. Dave, sorry if you're still on the other
No, no, I was just typing.
I actually do have a question, yes, on the fringe benefits, the hundred percent payment for administrators' dental, life, health. We, we did talk about that, correct?
For next year, okay. You good?
Yes, Simon.
Okay, great. Daybreak for a vote?
Heatherly?
Yes.
Zicor?
Yes.
Dunaway?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item G, recommend approval of the certified staff for the 2020-2021 school year.
Can I get a motion in a second?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second, motion second, Heatherly and Dunaway, are there any comments? Yes, go ahead.
This is consultant with the contract.
Yeah, yep.
Yes, it is.
Andy, you have a question, though?
So were the salaries frozen or not?
For our, our certified staff, they are under the negotiated agreement and they have one more year with that.
Year.
And there's just that three percent for the year.
And we start negotiations in January, is that right?
Yes.
Thank you. And I believe there are three-year contracts?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, three years. Any other comments before we vote? Dave, are you ready? Ready for a vote?
Heatherly?
Yes.
Dunaway?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Zicor?
Yes, motion carries.
Item H, recommend approval of extended day certified contracts for the 2020-2021 school year.
I'll make the motion, can I get a second?
Second.
Motion in second, Dunaway, Zicor. Are there any comments?
It's sort of, I know this is routine, but why, why are we in that? Is it because their positions are part of them to go beyond the school year?
I'm sorry.
Because they're finishing this school year or is it because they're starting going for next school year?
Right, so the extended days can be a variety of configurations for the different fields. So say, for example, uh, a guidance counselor would have some as they end the year, even some over the summer at the high school, and then the, the days before the school starts, you know, uh, when we've been able to have the transition of, say, for example, a freshman orientation, the guidance counselors on those days before the school started was actively involved, were actively involved in that. Uh, we know that some of, that's some of the things that we have to plan and work through. Those orientations and different things will potentially look different this year. But yes, they still need extended days.
So there's no change in, in the positions that you're recommending from previous years?
Yeah, and no increase in extended days.
So library, work in the library over this one.
That's right.
Okay. I have another question because of, because of COVID, you know, we all work from home. So now with these contracted days, will they, will they be expected to physically be in district for these days, no more working from home?
Ideally, we would want them in district as we get closer to when they would actually be reporting, then that will have to be determined. For example, if it's a library and you are setting things up in the library, you need to physically be there with your books. And we may need to arrange that they are there when other people aren't there, if the alert is that high. If it is something else about working with student records and you're making sure that classes have been transferred over and they're being set up some way and you can do that electronically. Then, given what the level of the virus is, we may have to allow them to make arrangements so that that work can get accomplished. But they wouldn't necessarily have to be at their desktop at, in their office. So ideally, yes, the, our thought is, and it's the desire, much like the community, we want them there and obviously we want it as, as normal and as traditional as it has been. Can I say it's going to be exactly like that? I cannot due to virus. But the time will be spent, the time of need is necessary to be spent.
So, maybe I just want to rephrase this. I'm going to have a hard time approving this if half of these days are going to be working from home. I, I'm just, you know what I'm saying? I just, I feel like, what is the district's expectation? We need to know that with these extended work days.
So what I'll say right now is, for example, but this is for next year's contract. Our guidance counselors that have the extended days, for example, at the high school, they are Right, right, so, but they are, they do come in on the days that they are scheduled and they are, are doing that.
It's just hard, once you have COVID, you kind of get used to working from home, it's kind of, you know, it's, sometimes it's you have to ease back into that and then reset the expectation that um, our district doesn't have a work from home policy, that was just kind of a COVID nineteen, unique circumstance. And we just want to get back on, back on track.
I think they do as well, but I do want to be careful promising something that with the uncertainty of
We don't know what's going to happen with the spike or something, but Thank you. Thank you. Any other comments? Are we ready for a vote? I think we're ready for a vote.
Dunaway?
Yes.
Zakor?
Yes.
Heatherly?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item I, recommend approval of the classified staff for the 2021 school year.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Heatherly, second by Dunaway. Any comments? Ready for voting?
Heatherly?
Yes.
Dunaway?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes, Zakor?
Yes. Motion carries.
Recommend approval of supervisor staff for the 2021 school year.
I'll make the motion. Can I get a second?
Second.
Motion in second, Dunaway, Zakor. Any comments? Isn't this new date with, with our works? So this is another new thing that I brought to working with Helen is we are now doing the supervisor staff recommendations. So.
That's the second piece.
Yes, that's nice. She's done a good job kind of cleaning this up for us. Okay, if there's no other comments, we're ready for a vote.
Dunaway?
Yes.
Zakor?
Yes.
Heatherly?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Motion carries. Are you ready, Simon, or you just any time? Okay, cool. All right, I had a feeling.
Did you send it to me?
I did.
All right. So we are back on item C and we had a motion in a second. We removed the amendment and Mr. Patrick has, um, kind of worked on this the last few minutes. And would we?
At this point, Madam President, I would move to amend that the motion to be approved, but with the following revisions. The draft of the job description attached shall constitute essential job functions and qualifications for the position, excepting that the minimum qualifications section shall be replaced with the following quoted language. Minimum qualifications, bachelor's degree or equivalent experience, certifications, and pertinent systems used by the school district, which would remove the Ohio Department of Education licensure in specific reference to certified Google, Microsoft, or IST.
Did you say that one part again, Simon, the, you moved what, the bachelor's setup section?
So I would just say this, that the, the part of, I'll, I'll restate it one more time and I'll let you know when the amendment ends. And then kind of a point of clarification, just so I don't want to be sneaking one past the goal that he's, okay, reference here. So I would move to amend the motion, except to approve, as it's written, excepting that the draft of the job description that's attached shall constitute the essential job functions and qualifications for the position, excepting that the minimum qualifications section shall be replaced with the following. Colon, next paragraph, quote, minimum qualifications, bachelor's degree or equivalent experience. And then the second point would be certifications and pertinent systems used by the school district. And quote, and end my motion to amend. And as a point of clarification, I would offer the board that based on what was presented initially as a draft, that would remove a requirement of a bachelor's degree or higher accredited institution. And it would also remove the Ohio Department of Education licensure and would modify the certification requirements to a general description of pertinent systems used by the school district because those would be ever-changing. And, and which are currently recommended as certifying Google, Microsoft, or IST. Um, Mr. Bush has some of these certifications. He may have all of them. Not educated enough in IT to know, but my thought is if we nail ourselves down to a specific system, we have to then maybe come back and just avoid any issues, so we extend the approvals on them. So that's my motion.
Mr. Beerhoff, what were you able to find on AppleTrack, if anything?
So there are degrees from Ohio University and, uh, Wright State. Does not indicate whether those are bachelors or associates. On the hiring sheet that was provided to the board as an attachment, that indicates associate's degrees.
Yeah.
Right, that's my right.
So I would say that there are associate's degrees from Wright State and Ohio University. As far as a certification from the Ohio Department of Education, there is not one on file with ODE, which would not be required for classified.
Right.
But a classified license, when we have classified license, we have, you know, like A licensures, we have, uh, would there be any classified license? At, 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 at the upper level? I'm not, I haven't approved any. I approved the license, but I didn't know. We just may not have anybody to fix that.
There is a certified director of technology license that is from ODE, but that would be for an administrative position.
Got it.
This position would not require a certified license.
And then I'd like to ask Simon, a ba, in your description, Simon, a bachelor's degree or equivalent, what does that mean?
Equivalent service.
It's one of your services. Did you, did you?
You get the, I mean, equivalent experience, the way I'm envisioning it and what I've seen.
So should we add the word experience? Is that your question?
It says the equivalent experience.
Oh, great.
What is that, the determine, how do you, how does one, what's the major in stick on you?
Yeah, well, equivalent experience, I think that's, right, I mean, good with it. Are you all okay with that?
Yeah. I, I, to be honest with you, I'll, I'll be vulnerable, okay. But I just don't, like, with Joel and simply advertised in the consortium board for, for bachelor's degree preferred, which left that door open for those who don't have it. I guess I'm just not quite, to me, the simplistic solution to this is just to reword that same thing in the just description for the coordinator position. But, you know, I'm okay.
Well, that's what we do. We reverted it under minimum qualifications, bachelor's degree or higher accredited institution.
I just say bachelor's degree preferred. I like that language too.
Oh, yeah, okay.
So if I'm, when you're saying bachelor's degree preferred, it's not a mandated requirement, it's a preference. And when we're talking about minimum qualifications, we're talking about what the threshold is for acceptance. So putting a preference in a, in a threshold qualification, I think, is counterintuitive. Our job function and essential job duties and minimum qualifications for a position don't necessarily need to, to match what we're putting out there. It's okay for us to say we prefer to have bachelor's degree. And if we don't, if we don't get it, we don't get it.
Or, that's what that famous little conjunction does. Yeah, or.
So Joelle, Joellen, we had Simon's suggestion. So what were you trying to say? It says bachelors, the bachelor's degree or higher.
Why not just say associate's degree as a minimum qualification?
I thought about that too.
And, and, you know, I'm sort of struggling with this. I think it's getting worse. Not better, not, not.
It's a great effort. I know, you have to have conversations sometime to face things.
So we hired a professional firm to redo these job descriptions and it says Ohio Department of Education licensure. So I assume that that's listed there because that's an expectation of this position throughout school districts in Ohio. And is that a standard that we would be expecting? I understand what you were saying, Mr. Beerhoff, that that's, it was currently, are you saying there's only currently licensure related to a direct position in technology?
Yes, yes, that's correct.
So my intuition tells me that it is the earlier on, even in this process, TEL is working for a director of technology. Script, description. And my thought process tells me that that was an area that was not, it was still draft and that that was not fine-tuned as much as it needed to be. And it's unfortunate that we didn't catch it before we had this lengthy discussion this evening by having noticed that.
Correct. It would have been nice if somebody could have gone to TEL and said, hey, Bob, when you originally started this, it was a technology director. Now it's a coordinator. This is the job description you gave us. Can you now tweak it to reflect the coordinator position? And then Bob would have said yes or no, delete the Ohio Department of Education licensure. Sadly, that didn't happen.
So we, we did have conversation with them, for sure, that we were changing it.
About the director versus the coordinator?
Yes.
So then to Joellen's point, if they did not take out this Ohio Department of Education licensure, then we can't. Do you know what I'm saying? Now that's a bigger issue. Right?
No, I, I don't think it is. I think it's an oversight, but I don't want to say.
I know, I mean.
Well, it, their, their work is a suggestion to us. We're not bound by what they provide us.
Right. And they work with multiple districts.
Okay.
It's my understanding, Dr. Kump, from Mr. Beerhoff, that what you feel we need from this position does not require that licensure or the bachelor's degree. And you've interviewed a lot of candidates and, and those things, correct? And this seems to be a pretty good candidate that you're bringing towards, towards us here today.
We had twenty-six applicants.
Okay, wait, I'm sorry. We're talking about.
I have a question, Joellen, I've got a question. I'd like to answer it first, please.
Okay, well, we're not talking about the applicant. We're talking about the description.
Yeah, right.
We can talk about the applicant when we talk about the applicant.
So Joellen, the reason for my question is because if they interviewed twenty-six people and none of them have a licensure, it kind of makes up our mind for us. I'd like to hear the answer.
There were twenty-six applicants, uh, and they narrowed it down, I believe, to five. And then that was narrowed down to three. I want to double check that. No, it was, it was seven, seven, then three, then three. Um, and they felt that it was a strong pool. And they felt that, they felt confident about their finalists.
I don't think I answered Simon's question.
So in light of that, I can't tell you that within, in within that twenty-six, was there someone that had a, a licensure from the state? There very well may have been. Would that individual have been seen as the best fit for our district? I would say no, because they were not brought forward. They might have been one of the three finalists, but they were not the one that was final, the final selection.
So she. You go, go ahead.
Just to, to answer your question. From my perspective, I was not a part of this process. But what I can say is that I, I trust that Mr. Fister and Mr. Stefanic went through all the appropriate processes and protocols to make sure that we had the very best candidate put forward to the board tonight.
So let me ask a question. Um, maybe this is what you're trying to ask Simon. On the minimum qualifications, maybe, do we also need to get rid of that Ohio Department of Education licensure line? Is, is that what you're thinking? Right, take care of that.
I did, took.
Oh, wait, okay, we did take that out. Okay, perfect.
Well, it's, it's been moved, but it's not for the second.
But.
Okay, it's not getting worse. Okay, I agree. What was posted was licensure? And recommended, was it a recommendation or was it a minimum qualification on the posting for which people apply?
So, Mr. Beerhoff, can you pull the?
Yeah, do you have the AppleTrack or the, the consortium posting? It was in Friday board update. It was in a Friday board update.
If you're asking what the job description on the posting said, it said bachelor's or prefer, or bachelor's degrees preferred.
What about the licensure? Do you have that?
Yeah, give me a second.
That'd be awesome.
So why can't you just put that on this document, under the bachelor's degree?
Well, I just see Joellen wanted to ask what, what the original documents said versus the, the TEL job description. And then hopefully we can get that answer in, in here.
And by saying bachelor's degree preferred, that it's aligned with what you posted on the consortium. So I'm like, my concern is if the original posting said that that was a requirement and we had applicants who had that licensure and were not selected, and now we're selecting and recommending someone who does not have that.
This is, I pulled up here, it says qualifications, bachelor's degree preferred with emphasis on education, computer science, business or a related field. Three to five years related experience in planning, directing, and coordinating programs such as telecommunications and records management. Extensive knowledge of computer networks, in-depth knowledge of network protocol and topologies, ability to manage multiple projects, buildings, and prioritize, prioritize the needs of the district. Ability to work effectively and collaboratively with others at the team. There is no licensure requirement there.
I'm not, I'm not as upset as you guys or as, as, I guess, I should say it that way. I, I, yeah, I, that's why I'm rephrasing.
Thank you.
It, it doesn't bother me that our, our posting varies from this. I, I'm okay with just cutting out the top of that technologies coordinator posting where it says the two hundred and twenty-six days out of range, somebody that you just read from, Mr. Beerhoff. Cut that off and, and cut the application procedure off and just make that. And that satisfies everybody's concerns related to the job description not matching what we've got. So, so long.
What document are you looking at, Simon?
I'm looking at what was emailed to us.
It was like a, it was like a standalone email.
It was emailed in
Maybe like two.
June, June, or it was emailed June 2nd as an attachment.
It's just the description.
It was just the, the technologies coordinator. Um, and I, is there a way you can pull that up for the public reading portion of it, Mr. Stevens, so it's seen by the public, please? Did I get that email? I can forward.
I was gonna say, why don't you forward it a little bit?
Oh, forward it to you right now because I don't want to violate the public means that here.
Right, so it was June, yeah. It was a standalone email from Dr. Kump. And she gave it to us, I think, the day before it went on the consortium.
So, all right, Dave, that's coming to you right now.
Hang on, Simon forwarded to Dave and Dave's gonna put it up for us. We all have it. The one I got came from Dr. Kump. Was it Dr. Kump, Simon?
Kevin, there are a couple, couple sent. The one I'm looking at is from Dr. Kump.
Yeah, that's mine. Thank you, Dave.
That is ask you, is there, what is the objection to changing the technology coordinator law on our agenda that we're looking at? Under to vote with the agreement for, for draft to change that description, minimum qua, minimum qualifications, remove that bachelor's degree or higher from accredited institution. Just put in what was put here with back in early June, bachelor's degree preferred with emphasis on education, computer science, business or related field. What is the objection to that? Let's start with that.
Well, I, I can't speak for everybody else, but what I've heard in the room today and what I was trying to accomplish here is, is prevent delay in approving potentially to hire somebody that we need. And so issues I've heard in the room today, my concern, related to us maybe potentially hiring somebody that doesn't have the minimum qualification stated. So my feeling was is that creating a position with that, the essential job functions identified as well as any qualifications we feel are necessary. I defer to Mr. Beerhoff, Dr. Kump, and Mr. Stefanic and Gary Fisters, what they feel is appropriate for the district in that regard because I'm not an IT professional. And I, nor do I have any IT experience in school setting. So based on what I'm hearing them say, they don't feel that the certifications and qualifications, the minimum qualifications satisfy those. So my solution to that issue was to remove them from that so that we can move forward today. I believe that Ms. Heatherly has concerns related to the job description that was posted for people that were applying may not match what we are now approving today.
Correct.
I, I personally don't share those and I, I'm not saying that they're not warranted, I just don't share them. But it seems to me that what could solve this entire problem is just us deleting that last application procedure from that, deleting the top portion heading of that document, making that the essential job function and duties of the positions along with the qualifications. making that the essential job function and duties of the positions along with the qualifications.
Thank you.
That, that satisfies.
Kind of very.
Everybody's concerns. And then we can go back to these people who are still suggesting job descriptions for the future and say, oh, by the way, you're not done with this, or we're not done with this. And then we can amend it and approve it later on with everybody else, so we're not tied into it.
Well, I think that's the fancy way. I think the simple way is right under qualifications. Under this draft version right here, eliminate that first sentence and replace it with what's, oh, I'm sorry, yes, right there. That's the one to replace it with, right there, what's up?
Instead of bachelor's degree, associate's degree.
That's what I suggested.
Not even associate, bachelor's degree preferred with emphasis in education. It parallels this document that went.
Oh, I see what you're saying. Add that to the Patel.
Add this, replace, put that in the Patel document as the draft and let's move forward. I mean, then, then they're aligned. You got two documents aligned. It captures this very qualified candidate that has a lot of experience. We move forward.
How does, how does everybody feel about that?
I feel that doesn't address everybody's concern if we're gonna go off the suggested language. I think that this is what we posted.
Right.
Removing the things that relate to the application range and dates of employment takes care of things that aren't permitted to the job functions and qualifications. We simply approve what we posted as the essential job functions and the qualifications in the hiring. That satisfies everybody's concern. Now, the documents don't necessarily need, they don't parallel each other, they're exactly identical.
That's just what I said.
Well, I, I said it the first time and you said something different, so I may have misunderstood.
I said that this is a simplistic way of solving this. I really just don't need to go on and on about it. Just bind the two documents and I, I don't see it, why we have to get so deep in the verbiage of all this. Match them.
Go ahead, John, and then I have a question, so go ahead with your suggestion. Hopefully we don't get all the rest too hard. Go ahead.
I know.
No, it's okay, we have to get this worked out, so go ahead.
I'm wondering if we should modify the agenda to, to move the new hire and hire that person based on the position that they interviewed for.
Yes.
To prove that, move forward. Then, recognizing that all job descriptions are going to be updated and all current employees who are affected by those changes are going to sign new job descriptions. These updates will be included in the new job description. Does that make sense?
I think it's sensible.
Rather than trying to fit a new job description to applicants who applied under the
Right.
expectation that they were applying for a different position. I just want us to make sure we're not making a hiring decision that is inconsistent with what was posted.
Right, so my question kind of aligns with your comment, which is perfect, because I, I think I asked this question earlier, but it's been forty-five minutes. Has Mr. Bush seen which document? Which document does he?
He would have, he would definitely see this.
Because this is what he's. Right, so he hasn't seen the Patel version.
I don't know that.
Okay, I don't know that. Um, so I kind of like Joellen's suggestion of.
And I think Mr. Patrick was meaning that way if I was in intervention. He just said that for our, whether you call it adoption or that basically that document needs to be slightly cleaned up, meaning that the the application procedure is taken off because that is not part of truly the description.
Wait, here's a suggestion. I'm sorry, John, this is what you said. So, why don't we just take this, this Patel draft off and put this on there? Is that what you said?
Yeah.
Is that what we all said?
That's what I said.
Okay, I think so.
Fifteen minutes ago.
Okay.
Well, it took us a while to get there, so.
Sometimes there's too many questions, but.
I didn't understand your communications.
So, we would still have to make an amendment, though, because we are, we are, okay, exactly. So, Simon, going back to seven-ten, which was fifteen minutes ago, was your amendment to take this Patel job description off and putting this one on?
No.
Okay, but I like that.
But after we just, after we discussed it.
Right.
I said that if we're gonna address everybody's concerns, the easiest thing is to use this document. Removing the application procedure, removing the top of it and just substituting that document with what's in there. And then my motions were meant, which I've already started drafting, which I stopped because I didn't know if it was
Right.
worth it at that point.
So.
So what I'm gonna do now is gonna, I'm, I'm gonna withdraw my motion to amend.
But I already seconded that.
Oh, you did.
So we can vote, we need to vote on the amendment. And then we can, we can make a third amendment or actually a second amendment to, um, if you don't want to make it, I will, we're saying the same thing.
If you, yeah.
So I would like, I would like to make an amendment to get rid of the Patel job description draft and replace it with the one that you're working on right now from Dr. Kump, which is the original technology coordinator job description. And I, can I, can I get a second?
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second, but we still need to vote on your amendment and the original. So we have three motions on the floor right now.
Dave, do you have a concern?
Well, there's no reason to vote on the original because Simon's is a motion to amend that one.
And then I have an amendment too, so.
Right. I mean.
We basically all want the second amendment. That's what we're all agreeing on, which is beautiful, because we've all.
Well, rather than having, no.
And just remember, I opened up this conversation by asking about that minimum requirement.
Yeah, that's great. So go ahead, Simon, what were you gonna say regarding the, the original motion?
Yes, I, I do take responsibility for everything here today.
We'll give Ann all the credit and then we can move on.
And the responsibility.
So, um, I, I really don't care how this goes, to be candid. I, let's just get it moving, please.
Yeah, but do you know, we already have the motion and the amendment, and the amendment a little.
Well, nobody seconded Simon's amendment.
I did. I did, I seconded it.
Okay. All right, so what am I taking off of this?
So all we're trying to do is replace.
I've already taken this off, bottom. What am I taking off? What else is coming off of this?
I can see the other.
The first top two lines.
You want those gone as well?
Or just, I just, I guess just that one right there, because you keep that technology coordinator. And that.
That was in the advertisement.
That's my understanding.
Seven to ninety-two.
That's a little low. It's about salary schedule coming up. We're full. Take your time, we're not rushed. We've already been doing this for fifty minutes, so don't go rush. Let's just get this right. And then we'll vote on the two amendments and the original motion. Hey, but we, we got this done, so I'm proud of this, right?
It's not done because we're gonna have to come back and amend it later.
We're working, honey.
Are you kidding me? PDF converter here, great. Owen has a word document.
Okay. I have a revised job description in four dogs.
Thank you.
What? Why don't delete the old one out of there?
Are you talking about the Patel one or the? Yeah, I'm trying to pull it up. Cool, like you said, go ahead, Dr. Kump.
My thought is that we would, so it's, it's almost like a step of, of sequence that it would remain as what we call an artifact that was there, but that's what was replaced. And then we have a piece that we replaced with.
Okay.
Yeah, that works.
Okay, let's just read this bachelor's degree preferred. Is everybody okay with the, um, revised job description? Did everyone get a chance to read it? It's pretty much the original one that Dr. Kump sent a few weeks ago. Okay.
Move to amend current motion, pass.
If everybody's ready, let's start the voting. Do we vote on the original motion first or the second amendment first?
Technically, I think we have to move to the second amendment.
Yeah, and then we're.
That gets shut down, then we go back to the original motion at that point, and you would move to amend it as we've just discussed, or I could, it doesn't matter.
Right, I don't care.
Well, you're gonna have to give me a sec because everything.
No, take it, Tony. We're just, we're just, we're just talking through how to do this because we've had two amendments now. I don't think I got a second on my amendment, so I'll, so that's good.
I don't think it's, yeah.
That's, that's good.
I think technically you have to move to, to vote on the.
Your, the first amendment and then the original and then some of the amendments. Perfect. That's what we'll do? Okay, and you did second? Thanks for remembering, Michelle Helen.
Yeah, she's got.
Okay.
From point of order, then, I guess.
Yeah, we'll start with mine, then yours, then the original. Right?
No, I think from point of order, I, I mean, I could be wrong, but I don't know if you can amend an amendment like that.
We've done it before, unless we were wrong before too, because we had two amendments on and written on the floor.
I.
Doesn't mean we did it right, but we've done it, I don't say that. If we give an hour's worth of work and then voted in the wrong order, that would be terrible. That would not be a good thing, correct? But I know it's a wrong. This has nothing to do with you, Mr. Wood. We're just trying to clean up a job description so that, so that everybody is on the same page and we're being this clean up. That's good.
Okay, so on Simon's first motion that he did.
Yep.
We had Simon and Teresa.
Yeah, Simon amended, I seconded, and then he sent you the email.
What's the third one?
Then the next amendment is mine, which Anne seconded to do this technology coordinator revised job description, which we just added, which everybody chipped in on it.
I, I emailed you some suggested language for, for your, for yours.
Oh, really?
Not to you, but to David. Maybe, just to try to help everybody along. You don't have to follow it.
Yeah, I thought we just.
So the third motion states approval to create a technology coordinator non-teaching position and no longer utilize a director of technology administrative position. The attached draft of the job description shall be replaced with a document created from editing the job description posted, and such attachment shall constitute the essential job functions and qualifications for the position. That includes what we wanted, so.
And you have both the original Patel attachment to that.
Correct, there's the whole thing.
Yeah, it does.
Perfect. Does anybody remember who did the original, original motion? I was just gonna get it from the video at a later time.
I don't remember who did the original. I feel like it was maybe, I don't remember. Does anybody? The original motion second?
I had it down and with all the things.
Yeah, that's okay. Sorry, Dave, no, it'll be, I want to say it was myself.
So, so what are we voting on here?
So we're, right now, we're voting.
We're voting on the amendment.
Second and then, yeah. So right now, I have a motion and a second, myself and Anne to.
No.
What?
The voting on the first amendment, which is the second form of the, the, so it's the motion to amend by me is seconded by, by you, Madam President.
Oh, we're going on that one?
Yes, that gets voted first.
Gotcha.
Then we go back to the original one. Then on that one, you would.
Okay, gotcha.
Yes.
So right now, we have Simon's amendment, which was seconded by me. So can I get, um, Dave, we're ready to vote on that amendment?
Patrick.
Yes.
Oh, no.
Yeah, it's all no's. Should, yeah, it should be all no's. At least three no's. We need three no's.
I gotta know.
Donaway, no.
Heatherly.
No.
The core.
No.
Motion fails, which is perfect, that's what we wanted. So now going back to the original motion second, which we don't know the order, so let's just do an alphabetical.
At that, Madam President, you would move to amend it again, but this time as we just discussed.
So we're going to move, we're going, we're moving to amend the original motion with what you have suggested, which is including all this.
Right.
So now we're just voting, we've already done that.
And then Anne was the second.
Yes. So now we vote on this one.
Correct, on, that we all agreed on for the last twenty minutes, the technology coordinator revised job description.
Heatherly.
Yes, no, it's Dunaway, Zicor.
What the heck, I'm over that.
It's okay. It's Dunaway, Zicor. Maybe that was the original one, that's good.
It's not.
Good. Then we have the order.
It's not.
Okay.
Dunaway.
Yes.
Zicor.
Yes.
Heatherly.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
So now we still have the original motion on the floor.
That, that's been amended, you amended it.
No, Simon did, so then we're good?
We're, we're, it's done.
Okay, okay, great. Hey, you know what? That took an hour, but we got it done and it was worth it. And I feel good about that. So motion carries and that takes us Dr. Kump, so just we're on D now.
We are on D now.
And then D, we already did, so.
Recommend approval of the salary schedule for the 2021 school year for the technology coordinator non-teaching position.
I'll make the motion. Does anybody want a second?
I can second.
Motion and second, Dunaway, Heatherly, is there any discussion? I think we're ready for vote, Dave.
Dunaway.
Yes.
Heatherly.
Yes.
Patrick, yes, the core.
Yes. Motion carries.
Item E, recommend approval to hire the following classified position for the 2020-2021 school year pending proper certification and paperwork. Brad Bush, technology coordinator, step nine, start date July 1st, 2020.
Can I get a motion?
I'll move.
Second. Moved and second, Heatherly and Zicor. Is there any discussion?
I have a question. The paperwork, does that include transcripts from the educational institution?
Of transcripts?
Yes, it should yes. Does anybody have any questions? Dave, I think we're ready for vote.
Heatherly.
Yes.
Secor.
Yes.
Dunaway.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Motion carries. So we already did.
Down to K.
Okay, we're down to K.
All right, K.
Great.
Recommend approval of the TPCDA exempted village schools and the TCEA memorandum of understanding, MOU, dated June 22nd, 2020, for progressive supplemental salaries for fall 2020 sports activities and fall 2020 student extracurricular activities related to performances associated with marching band vocal and instrumental music programs.
I move. I'll second, moved and seconded is Secor, Dunaway. Any comments?
I, I, I do. I do. Probably knows a lot about this, so. This is the one where we, we received something like if they work, if because of COVID, they, they remade 50% of the games and there's a formula.
Yes, it's in thirds. Yes, it's in thirds, so preseason events is a first third. So if, you know, the governor or the state athletic association cancels before the first game, they get at least a third of the salary.
Okay.
And then I believe it's the first game would be the two-thirds of the salary, and then half of the season would be the full salary.
Okay.
And this is just for the athletics and the.
Correct.
Instrumental.
And instrumental.
Yes.
So where do the other groups fit into, like, you know, like if you're. Are there other groups, like.
Like the bowling program or.
Or the quiz bowl or the, you know, how does that all?
Oh, like chess club.
That'll be, that'll be dealt with when we move closer to the school year and determine, because right now, I mean, if, if things get canceled, there's no reason to even issue contracts.
Chess club hasn't met yet.
Yeah.
Oh, this is a preseason.
Football started conditioning, yeah, so this is like sports conditioning, cross-country, football, band.
Non, non-coaching supplementals are tend to be done in August.
Right.
So we discussed that, and hopefully we'll look at, that was our intent, to look at non-coaching supplementals and possibly do same kind of progressive pay model for them if we get to that point and we can have them.
Thank you.
Yeah, yeah.
Anybody else? Dave, ready for vote?
Okay. Secor.
Yes.
Dunaway.
Yes.
Heatherly.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item L, recommend approval of the following supplemental fall coaching positions for the 2020-2021 school year seeing verification of proper certification and paperwork.
Can I get a motion and a second?
I move.
Moved, I'll second, seconded, Secor and Heatherly. Comments?
I have a question.
Sure.
Do, when we're, when we're having these people presented, are we doing any potential conflicts of interest or potential violations related to nepotism and things like that to make sure that not, I mean, are we clear, I guess, as part of their application, are they answering whether they're related to anybody, things like that?
Related to the person that recommending them for hire?
Or a person that could be supervising their work? Direct supervisor? Is that being asked, because I think that could be an issue.
Dr. Combs?
Yes, I, I respond, the, as far as, many of these are rolling over from a prior year, so to say that they have signed an application or that's on that, that they've maybe been doing it for, that they're not necessarily new, so. But what I will say, for example, if you look at the listing, the second one, there has definitely been a step taken there of who is evaluating and who is making the recommendation for that individual.
Does it say in our application, like, sometimes application will say, are you related to anybody? Is that?
The, the application for a coach does not.
Okay.
Has that, but it's not, not a bad thing, because sometimes you don't have, you have different class names.
Because I've done applications before, are you related to anybody at this company?
That is a question on Apple Trap. On, on application for Apple Trap.
Well, great, so then it would have been answered.
And, and unless they had been with us longer than when we were using Apple Trap.
We've been using that for a pretty long time, correct, or no? Is it new?
At least since I was assigned in the district in 2016.
I was gonna say, I've kind of remembered it from this time.
We had the Dayton Consortium, which was before that, before Apple Trap.
Okay.
My comments real quick on this, if it's. I, I certainly don't want to exclude someone or eliminate someone because of a relationship that doesn't really fall into that, that room, narrow, somewhat narrow window of nepotism. You know, so if they're not, you know, I certain, that, that's, that's. If they're the best and they're not, it doesn't fall under that category of nepotism, by all means, you know, that applicant is deserving of that position. Only thing I just want to say is that one of the perceptions with this district has been somewhat of a maybe not technically nepotism as much as cronyism, and I just hope that we're always cognizant of that because that bothers me, that really does. I, I think that anybody on the outside who comes in deserves a really level playing field in terms of applicability qualifications, et cetera, and it should be based on some type of circle of family and friends. But on the other hand, someone should not be excluded from that simply because of the. As long as it's not nepotism.
Right, a relative can't beat their supervisor, would be that narrow window which you're speaking of.
Right.
So, so which question get answered or not so much?
Well, my question was solely related to ensuring they were complying with the Ohio Revised Code and not violating any of that, and so that's been addressed or is addressed in our application and in, in the way these are set up, then with that understanding, I'm, I have no other issues. It's, it's more of a question than an issue.
I'll add a, I'll add a question. I know you're sick of my question, but it's my last year to ask you this question.
All right.
Come on, one more time. Has anybody ever reached out to Mr. Kramer to see how he, you know, of course with COVID, everything got kind of crazy, I completely understand that, and I have nothing negative to report, I just, as a question, how do we feel about coaching surveys, right? You know, I always ask that, but. Because sports especially, as a parent, it's very difficult to go to a coach, because, you know, in sports, you don't want to be the squeaky wheel, so.
Do you think the survey comes directly to the athletic director instead of the coaching director?
I was just wondering how he, I was just wondering how he felt about it, because he's been here for a year, and this question has been coming up for the five years I've been on the school board, and all athletic directors have a different kind of feel on that, and I was just curious if it ever came up in conversations with him? When you two were speaking or.
Sorry.
Go ahead and join them.
Why don't we invite him to a future work session and respond to that?
Okay.
Because we're, yeah, voting on this list of coaches, that's great.
Yeah.
Great question.
I would be more inclined to vote a certain way, knowing that the, you know, that there was positive feedback for, you know, that kind of a thing, but. So, yeah, I mean, it's not, it's not like a, I'm not gonna put a wrench in the.
This is slightly off topic, but I really appreciate too what Teresa's saying, bringing in some type of survey, and although I'm not sure I'd want to to go directly to the athletic director, I do think there can, there is a perception, I mean, I'm not gonna dance around about this in TPCity, that there's sort of a clique when it comes to sports, and who gets in and these select teams and this and that, and, you know, I, I just, I don't, I don't like that aura, you know, I really want people to feel that there's a lot of objectivity here, talent matters, conviction, striving, and th- these are the things I really want our students to feel, you know, when they don't feel that, that bothers me. I want to say, how can we make ourselves better so that students and parents really do sense that?
Yeah, and this isn't a negative, we just want to be better, be the best that we can be.
Because it's a big part of our community.
Oh my gosh, it's a huge part of all kids, I mean, the, the amount of hours that you spend as a parent, as a student, as a coach, it's, it's a very important aspect of a child's education, sports.
So I'm always open to ways to make it more objective and, I think, saying that directly to Mr. Kramer at work session. So that he hears that from the board would be appropriate.
Just if you have it, you know, it does need to be a work session, I just, if you, if you've had a conversation with him, that, that's all, I just. It was just a kind of a, you know, pretty.
For me, it's important, and I do think that our last athletic directors that I've been able to convey to them my importance of them doing the evaluations of the coaches
Yeah.
and really put some thoughts and comments in them, and I have seen that, both from our most recent and from this.
Okay, well, great.
I, I think, and that's not a survey, but at least I do feel like there is some earnest feedback that's being provided for individuals to grow.
Yeah.
And I think that's important.
I have a question. For those, for our voluntary coach, have we administered the background check, the volunteer check?
Yes, they actually get fingerprinting, they have a name, yes.
It's all been completed, it's all made us.
I think we're ready for a vote, does anybody else have any comments or questions? Dave?
Secor.
Yes.
Heatherly.
Yes.
Dunaway.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item M, recommend approval of the attached substitute staff for cafeteria maintenance and transportation the 2020-21, 21 school year.
Can I get a motion?
I'm motion.
Motion.
I'll second.
Motion and second, Secor and Heatherly, are there any comments?
I have just a general comment, will there be some recruiting efforts to expand this list? Have a, I suspect that we're gonna have a bravery in all of these areas.
Bus drivers, right, for sure, I mean, if we knew what's gonna happen with that.
All of it.
Especially if they get, yeah. Hopefully.
I would say that we do it for the entire year, we're always trying to hire more people.
Well, the sooner the governor makes a decision, the sooner, hey, the sooner we can start our recruiting efforts, kind of hard, but you don't really, you know.
Well, I guess what I'm trying to say is there a way to put the minimum qualifications out there for applicants who may be interested in pursuing this, that's a substitute position.
Right, in fact, we were talking today, there's a, a strategy that one of the, not right here, but a little bit of a distance school district, how they were announcing bus drivers by actually advertising on the side of a bus that's parked out. And we actually thought it was a very good idea, I think it's kind of iconic, there is the bus and we need substitutes, you know? We're, we're interested, we're hiring, and.
Yeah.
Dave actually got a photo of that, what he saw, sent it our way, and we're in the process of looking to get a, a signage that we could put on one of ours, and I said the nice thing about it, you could move where the sign is, you know, and park it, and you know.
Has it a magnet, magnet, magnet?
It was a giant banner that covered the entire side of the bus.
Okay, thank you.
And it got me to tell somebody with a CPO, hey, turn the gun. And he went, yeah.
I think Haas signs does that too, your local company, that's neat, we, we advertise that.
Yeah.
The question.
Way to go, Dave.
Well, Mr. Fisher did say we need to check that the city council makes sure it's not violating a signage order, or signage. What do you call it, zoning law?
Right, we're double checking now before we make our.
If the bayers do, you might just like do a, like the Haas signs, like the sign, you like those magnetic ones, like the real ones?
Exactly.
You stick on your, because it's a lot smaller.
Should you start putting those on all corners around the district?
So if they say no, the city council, let's go backwards, let's not give up on the idea completely, let's just work it backwards, we don't want stupid. Any other comments or questions? Dave, are we ready for a vote?
Secor.
Yes.
Heatherly.
Yes.
Dunaway.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Oh, motion carries, I didn't, sorry.
Item M, recommend approval to pay $2,000 kitchen manager stipends for the 2021 school year to the following lunchroom managers to cover extra duties they assume, Archin, Margaret Dorn, Tammy Green, Julie Kelm, and Deanna Polley.
Can I get a motion and a second?
I'll move.
I'll second.
Motion and second, Heatherly and Patrick. Any comments?
Well, I guess my only comment would be what recourse do we have if in fact there, I mean, I don't know, with, with kitchen duties, if things aren't moving forward, how, sort of like your.
MOU.
Yeah, how, where does that fall into the, oh, please.
It's a little bit like the bus drivers said, believe there's the anticipation that there'll be much problem solving and the menus will more than likely have to be adjusted, if it ends up that they're eating in a classroom, you're not gonna have soup being carried down the hallway, I mean, so. I, we're not heavy in this area, and I think that the duties that they'll be assuming to problem solve to make sure that, and something may work now, but then it may not work a little bit later, then they'll have to do another adjustment. It may be that the items that work the best, that are maybe individually packaged, are going to be in high demand, so then you're gonna have to think of something else that you'll use in its replacement. So, I, the thought process is that our, many of our support services for the school are going to be in low need to help.
Regardless of how it pans out. Do you remember this being 1,500 last year, did it?
No, it's always been 2,000.
Okay, thank you for that. Maybe like a thousand years ago, I just don't, I don't remember. Okay, any other comments? Dave, I think we're ready for a vote.
Heatherly.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Dunaway.
Yes.
The core.
Yes. Motion carries.
Item Q.
No, oh.
Oh, excuse me, I'm on, oh, sorry, too far.
It's been a long meeting, it's been far.
Item O, recommend approval to amend the 2020-2021 school calendar.
I'll move.
Moved, can I get a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded by Heatherly and Secor. Is there any discussion?
Well, I, I will start by just saying that I do know, know and recognize that there has been some communication regarding the adjusted calendar, but what I will say is that regardless, we're really looking at the calendar and not the style of delivery. That regardless of whether it's blended, whether we are fortunate enough that we come back, you know, as, as a whole group together, or we don't have stipulations on busing and distancing, we don't know that, but what we do know is that there may be a need sometime during the school year, where we'll have to have a portion of time that will be distance learning again, if there's a spike. And we know that we want to do it better than what we did last time, we want to have learned from that, and we also need to, we have been gathering information about the curriculum where we think some standards need to be hit a little bit harder, because that was more of a bumpy fourth quarter, and so we need the time on our staff to really be the best we can be for where we're at and what we need to provide our students. I know that there's even been districts that, yeah, even within our county that's talked about, you know, that they too will be adjusting their calendar based on the need for some professional development and some work together. We also know that based on the six-foot distance, we are going to need to do some, I'll call minimizing and reconfiguration in classrooms. Some of our extra bookcases that may have been brought in by teachers, they're very loyal and giving and have to do those kinds of things. But what we may have to say, based on the space that we need for guests again and spacing, that that will have to be taken home. So some of that preparation, the screening, when we think about kindergarten screening, that if we have to do very small groups and have a certain configuration, that what's taking, you know, two and a half, three days may take a total of five days to do, you know. two and a half, three days may take a total of five days to do, you know? Uh, any sort of transition for uh, those that's going from one building to another, and we like to do a little transition place, piece. Uh, that will look different, they'll have to plan it different, they'll have to implement it differently. A sort of open house that we are able to put together, it's going to have to be planned, thought through, and then going to have to work with our staff about that this is different than what we've done before, but it's a way of trying to meet the needs and and be supportive of our students, so part of the reason of adjusting the calendar and having it on this agenda and not later is so that we can give as much notice as possible, and I really do understand when someone will, you know, indicate that this was adopted about a year ago, but unfortunately fortunately, at that time, I should say, fortunately, at that time, we weren't dealing with what we are today, we're dealing with something different. And so I would ask that we would consider it for the staff and the professional development, that the support of all the many things that we have to look at and adjust, and we know we're gonna have to do some adjustments of some sort.
You know, the government, we won't be waiting this long to tell us there's no guidelines and that we could go back. We know there's guidelines, and to be fair to our staff, especially our teachers and the administrators, they need some guidance on how to adjust moving forward, and I just think that that's probably not even gonna be enough time for them to get prepared, so whatever we can do to help ease us back in, we never even closed the end of last year, so we still have all of those closure issues that we have to address before we start a new school year.
With COVID nineteen is one thing that is a new trend.
That's what I was gonna add, exactly.
Then in itself, and that's not one, we're gonna wait till October to make sure that we get, they need to have that at the very beginning.
Yeah, and we don't know what that COVID trend is gonna look like, is it one day, two days, three days, until we get the governor's orders, we're all just.
What was terribly long ago that we started school after Labor Day, which I was like.
That makes me happy, I love starting school on Labor Day.
We went on that schedule.
It's been a long time. No, it's been like, it hasn't been that long, but it's been, yeah, it's been a while.
I think just the master's schedule and delineating duties and who does them, and making sure that that's well communicated, it's gonna take a lot of time.
Well, the busing is gonna take, that's gonna be, this is a housekeeping item, so if you go to the first attachment where it's Tipton City Schools District Calendar, not where it's, everything is written out, not the actual physical calendar, would it be, would it be possible on the May one, we have May twenty fifth seniors last day, May twenty eighth, second semester last day for students, two hour early release, would it be possible to add Saturday, May twenty ninth graduation? Just so it's on this paper as well? Do you see what I'm talking about, Dr. Calm?
I do.
Because we left it off last year too, and I had quite a few parents call and ask me about that.
When it is?
Yeah, just so it's on both documents. I know, it's weird, this mom called me and I said, oh, you're right, it's not listed on that paper. If you want me, I I can email Carrie.
That's the twenty nine?
Yeah, just add it.
That's the date that we would.
Well, it's it's on the other one, it says graduation on the district calendar, it's just not on this one, that's the Tipton City Schools.
Yes, I see.
The first attachment.
I see, okay, yes.
There's only three things in May, if we could add graduation, that would be four items under May. Saturday, May twenty ninth, graduation.
Got it, yes, you can do that.
Okay. The, yeah.
Yes.
The public content.
Uh huh, yes, the the, one that's.
Yeah, important, yeah.
I'm hoping this revised start date of August thirty first is going to allow enough time for preparation.
Right, it's.
Mr. Gerhold, is that what the best?
Yeah, I would, I would say as of right now, yes, that's, we feel that will be plenty of time. Um, we've talked with V C E A, uh, we've talked with our administrative staff, we've talked with with you all at the work session last week, and and with Mr. Stefanic um, before that work session, and we all feel that that two weeks should be enough time, that we feel like we can get this figured out and ready to go.
If not, we can readjust it, right, so we don't want to lock people in, we don't know what's gonna happen, but we can always add more, right? You'll come to us.
It's needed, that that would be a last resort, right?
Sure, sure.
And this one piece about what I call just saturation, after what we really are having, what I call heavier materials and different things that you're working with, that, you know, when you think about the timeframe that we do have, that that it's like two full weeks that we're able to provide, which is a very special opportunity, three weeks, it's it's hard to know, they also will be anxious to be getting the students in there and beginning those relationships.
Think how excited, because we're gonna bring back school this year, I mean, well, it has to be exciting for staff, because
Oh, Lord, look at them.
Third party's so happy, like, what a great, once in a lifetime kind of for you guys, I'm sorry. What'd you say, I didn't hear.
It's a whole more, let them go.
The kids wanna go back to school, they're so excited, they want, they miss their teachers, they miss their teachers, they miss their friends.
Yeah, exactly.
The first day of school's gonna be awesome, wow. Any other comments on the school calendar? Yeah, just six feet, yeah, those noodle, those noodles, those tomatoes?
Yeah, I swear, you know, that's what we can do.
Yeah. We're off track, okay, school calendar.
They're ready for a vote, they're phoned, that's our recess. I mean, you know.
That does solve the recess issue, I like it. We're getting slack happy, so let's vote.
Heatherly.
Yes.
Zakor.
Yes.
Dunaway.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item P.
I was playing.
I can't, it's only not, that's wrong, we did. Item B, approval to build for two school buses. Whereas the Tipton City Board of Education wishes to advertise and receive bids for the purchase of two school buses.
That's right.
Therefore, be resolved into City Board of Education, wishes to participate and authorize the Southwestern Ohio Educational Purchasing Council to advertise and receive bids on said board's behalf, as per the spec- the specifications submitted for the cooperative purchase of a school bus, or about you, Dr. Calm. Can I get a motion in a second? Guess that was still me.
I'll move.
Move, that's good. Moved and seconded by Patrick and Zakor, are there any comments?
Uh, we currently are able to get a thirty five thousand dollar grant from the state of Ohio for the purchase of one of these buses.
Awesome, wow.
So, yeah, we haven't had that before since I've been here, so.
And how old are the ones that we're replacing?
Um.
Or how many miles?
I wanna say that we've got some older than two thousand nine.
Okay.
Um, they're over ten years old.
Okay.
So, but usually we purchase one from the general fund, that's the one that will be thirty five thousand dollars less, and then we purchase one from the O three permanent improvement fund.
Okay.
So, um, we had talked about just buying one this year, but Mr. Pfister was very hesitant of not keeping up with two buses a year, just because when the fleet gets older, it gets much more expensive.
It's a big expense all at once.
Yeah, what should you do with the old ones?
Normally, they're traded in, um, we have looked into trying to sell them on gov deals, but there's not a lot of market for old school buses, I mean, we only get about two thousand to three thousand dollars for them.
I think you need one, you could use one, seven kids, seven kids.
It would end up in the backyard, destroyed, taken apart.
I can see you going to the Grand Canyon. We need you one of those bus driver signs, right, you could advertise all the way to the Grand Canyon.
We look at those reports and go. All right.
Okay, hey, we're having too much fun, okay, let's vote.
Patrick, that's Zakor.
Yes.
Heatherly, sorry, Dunaway.
Yes.
Heatherly.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item Q, recommend motion to approve the service contract for fiscal year twenty twenty one with the Montgomery County Educational Service Center.
I'll make the motion, can I get a second?
On second.
Motion in second, Dunaway and Heatherly, any comments?
Oh, I do. Another three hundred thousand, this is to Montgomery E S C after we have one point six nine million to Miami County, I don't, I'm not, I'm not understanding.
The one, I believe we just approved one point five.
One point four six million.
Was that what it was?
Pretty sure, one point six.
This year, we had one point six five.
For Miami.
For Miami County, yes, and the Montgomery County.
I mean, they don't match up. The recommended action says Montgomery County, but the public content says Miami County, so we get the wrong contract.
Oh, but when you open it up, it does say Montgomery County.
Montgomery County.
Yes.
Okay, we're good.
Yes.
Oh.
Okay, so.
No big deal, it's like a typo.
Yeah, it is a typo.
Okay.
Yeah, so we've had this, uh, these types of expenditures to Montgomery County E S C before, they, it looks a little higher than it has in the past, because they're including the, um, what do you call that, the school psychologist is on there, and we've also received, uh, we've had a student come into the district that requires some additional services. Now, I will say that the Miami County E S C just gave us a refund of a hundred twenty two thousand dollars for services that were not utilized.
Recoming.
Yeah, and so.
Thank you for following up on that.
Yeah, and I, I, I have to check today, it was positive, so, um, but.
So is there any refund from Montgomery County?
Not that they've sent to me yet, they haven't sent me the final services.
Well, we don't want you to. So, Dave, what are we picking up in Montgomery County that we're not getting out of Miami County E S C, I guess that's where I'm kind of confused.
So they do provide some different services, so for example, the uh auditory services, that would be they have a specialist in Montgomery County.
They have the, the vision and the hearing is done at Montgomery County, a school psychologist, uh, autism is also done through Montgomery County. There's an assessment service that's done through both counties, um, let's see.
But rather than list all of these, I'm just curious why you're not teasing out and listing those.
This is the contract that's pulled by them, um, that because they're required to have they used to not have contracts like this, they just had to pass the agreement, that so these are the services we think we're gonna use. But for Medicaid purposes, they have to have a contract that's detailed, all the particular items and services that they could provide to the district. Um, I do have a, a, um, an estimate sheet that is not attached here, that shows the services that they would be providing estimate, unless more kids move in or those kids that are receiving the services without.
One of the things it does, it provides flexibility in case the next student that moves in has a need that's on this list that right now we're not accessing.
I also liken it to, you know, two different law firms that would contract with, one special one within one area, or there might be and there's a lot of districts that contract with E S Cs, and so in order to access the service, you want to give to access either one, because you want the service rendered.
But you're, did you say, Dave, the school psychology services is one of the pair on?
We have one for Montgomery County, and we have one for Miami County.
Okay.
And one of the reasons for that with being at different E S Cs is it happens to be because school psychologists are difficult to secure. There's the, there's a high demand.
It's just, it's, it's a lot of money.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Now, three worked to two million between two E S Cs, so.
It's.
I just.
Yeah, it's like you should be able to bring in, solve it in-house.
Well, I don't know if that's gonna be, I mean, if it is more cost effective, absolutely, but I'm just saying, when we're outlaying a budget of two million, I want to keep a very close watch on exactly what that's going for and how it's being.
We do receive monthly updates from the E S Cs that show the students that have been served and the minutes provided to them.
Okay, that's.
Yeah, and those are turned over, I mean, just for beer pop, and our team see those reports, so.
It's, it's things, and many of these decisions are more difficult, such as like a physical therapist. Uh, that's one that would be more difficult for a single district to be able to secure. Okay.
And are gifted, we're doing in-house.
Yes, we are.
Really have part-time on that too. Okay, part-time, we have one part-time petition. We shared her with the, is it Montgomery County E S C?
Mine.
Miami? Miami, okay. Any, any more comments? Dave, ready for vote?
Oh my goodness, did we do a person second on that?
Yeah, we did.
Dunaway and Patrick.
I thought it was Patrick and Heatherly, no.
Okay, good, okay, good.
I, I put that one.
I was taken back by the Miami County title there, so.
Yeah, I know, we all got distracted.
Dunaway.
Uh, yes.
Heatherly.
Yes.
Patrick, yes, Zakor.
Yes, motion carries.
Item R, recommend approval of the new revised policies as presented in the June sixteen board meeting, this is the second reading.
Can I get a motion in a second? I'll make the motion.
Second.
Motion in second, Dunaway and Zakor, any comments?
I think we've got where we want to be on these two policies.
Yeah, exciting. I think we're ready for a vote, Dave.
Dunaway.
Yes.
Zakor.
Yes.
Patrick, yes, totally.
Yes.
Sorry to.
Motion carries.
Item S, recommend motion to require the superintendent to reside within the Tipton City School District.
I'll move.
I'll second, moved and seconded by Heatherly and Dunaway, are there any comments?
Is this something new, has this not been a requirement in the past?
It, so on our original contract that we did with our, with Mr. Stefanic, the first one, the way it was worded, it wasn't exactly clear, it said, may need to live in the district or something to that effect.
If the board requires the district to live, the superintendent to live in the district, that we would provide compensation for moving services.
Right.
And, uh.
But we rewrote the contract.
Mrs. Carroll wanted us to make sure that we actually had the board do a decision to stay, we want him to live in the district, so that way we can reimburse him for his expenses.
On his second contract from the revision, when we added the vacation, the holiday.
Right.
Um, and then.
This isn't tied into the policy.
No.
No, because you said his original, but it, it wasn't clear in his original contract, so we're now making it very clear that, as we all agree, that the superintendent of Tipton City Schools should reside in Tipton City.
Okay.
So, yeah, we're just kind of, call it like a housekeeping issue, yeah, okay.
Yeah, the hell, I'm more comfortable with that.
Yeah, I agree with them, I thought it was, I thought it was a good one. Are there any other comments? I think we're ready for a vote, Dave.
Heatherly.
Yes.
Dunaway.
Yes.
Patrick, yes, Zakor.
Yes. Motion carries.
Item T, recommend approval to authorize the treasurer to enter into agreements with former employees of the district, Paul Arthur Hoff and Kimberly Royce on behalf of the Tipton City Board of Education to resolve issues related to payment for accrued vacation or separation from employment that arose during the twenty nineteen twenty twenty school year.
I'll move.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded by Heatherly and Patrick, is there any discussion?
This is.
Clear, yeah, no discussion. Dave, ready for a vote?
Heatherly.
Yes.
Patrick, yes, Dunaway.
Yes.
Kor.
Yes. We are up to miscellaneous. Okay, um, miscellaneous upcoming meetings. The next work session will take place on Tuesday, July twenty first, twenty twenty, at the Board of Education, beginning at six P M. The next regular Board of Education meeting will take place on Monday, July twenty seventh, twenty twenty, the Board of Education, beginning at six P M.
Is the work session at six P M, or is that supposed to be five thirty?
I think we moved it to six because that's when, um, Joanna can comfortably get off work, and right, Joel, is that six o'clock?
All right, I agree.
Okay, so the Zoom sessions were five thirty, because she, you didn't have like that travel time.
Gotcha.
Yeah, so that's probably what you're thinking. Okay. So are we good on that, Dave, you good?
Yep.
Okay, uh, motion to adjourn. Moved and seconded, Zakor and Dunaway.
Zakor.
Yes.
Dunaway.
Yes.
Heatherly.
Yes.
Patrick, yes.
Meeting adjourned.
At eight fifty P M.
Thank you. Thank you for looking into this. Thank you.
All right.